Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Our first order of business is the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just so the public knows, Chairman Pierce is out of town this evening, so I will be acting as the chair for tonight. Our first, our second order of business will be the acceptance of the meeting minutes of October first, both the public and the non-public minutes. And my question is, would do you, does the board wish to defer it till Selectman Pierce is here? Or are you comfortable with simply approving them without him?
Well, I think we've been waiting till we have the full board.
We typically do. So, we will defer on the minutes until next week. Anybody not going to be here next week? Next is announcements. Got a couple of those. Once again, we did, I think we mentioned this before, but the state is announced its drawdown of the lakes and Glen Lake, Greg's Fall, that will be done on October twenty-seventh. So, we typically let folks know that, for voters, things of that nature. Secondly, there is a traffic alert. The Goffstown Public Works Department announces sidewalk construction on Main Street, and that is between Elm Street and Factory Street. And work is expected to begin on this coming Wednesday, October seventeenth. And it'll, the work will last between seven AM and five PM, and it should take about six weeks to complete. There'll be two tra, two lanes of traffic, which will be maintained as much as possible during the construction, and delays are to be expected in the work zone. Some on-street parking will be blocked off to accommodate work areas, but all businesses will be open. Just to let everyone know that sections of sidewalks will be obstructed, which may impact pedestrian movement, and motorists are used, are urged to use caution for pedestrians who may be in and around the affected section. So if you have any questions, contact Megan Terrio at four nine seven three six one seven, extension two eight zero, or go to the town's website, which is www.goffstown.com. And, voting, also have another announcement. There'll be, on November sixth will be Election Day, and there will be some, looks like there'll be some constitutional amendments that are on the ballot. Just want to let, let folks know that. I'm not going to read all of those, but I just want to remind folks again, November sixth is our general election. So if you, you can register at the polls, but obviously it makes it a lot easier for yourself if you register beforehand.
And that voter's guide is, Kathy put that up on the website.
Okay, so there is a voter's guide for you. If you're interested in finding out more about the constitutional amendments, I believe there's a couple of them.
Yeah, I just have a-
There are three of them.
A question though for clarification for also the viewers. The information that you're talking about, voter's guide, is that information provided by the town, or is it provided by the state?
The state.
Just so that, I'm bringing that up just for clarification, because people are used to a voter's guide, and this particular information in the voter's guide, we have nothing to do. We just take that information that's given to us by the state and put that into our voter's guide.
Yep. It is not quite, any other announcements before we, I just want to say thank you to the volunteers, Goffstown Main Street, another successful pumpkin regatta, and I know that a lot of hard work goes into that, and once again, it was another, another great event. Any other announcements? All right. We're gonna go to the, we need to accept a donation of four hundred and fifty dollars from JLV Trade School for the use of Grassmere Town Hall, and it's gonna go into the Grassmere Town Hall Restoration Fund, and since it's under the statutory limit, we are allowed to accept, accept it, and-
Without a public hearing.
What, without a public hearing? Yeah.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. And similarly, there's another grant which we can accept. It is in the amount of four thousand fifty dollars from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency, and this was addressed by the police chief last week with res, with respect to Goffstown Operation Safe Commute Patrols. And I would need a motion to accept that grant.
Motion to accept the grant in the amount of four thousand fifty dollars from New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for the Goffstown Operation Safe Commute Patrols.
And seconded by Selectman Lemay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. It's about six-ten, and this is a time where we offer the public to provide comment on any issues that are not on our formal agenda, so the public knows who's watching in the audience. There, other than the fire chief here, there are no other members of the public, so if there, anyone who does come later, we'll take them up in our second portion of public comment if, if, if it's necessary.
TA.
We're gonna go to the town administrators' report, because we are, we have a meeting with, with an individual at six-thirty, and then we have a public hearing at seven. So Sue will head to the town administrator's report.
Thank you. Weekly meeting schedule is in your packet. Trustee, the trust fund is tomorrow night, and Budget Committee. Wednesday is Library Planning and Communications Subcommittee and Library Trustees, and also Parks and Rec Commission. Consensus folder tonight of the manifest for October eighth, the AP one was three hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-three cents, and the payroll withholding one on the same date was one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. This week's October fifteenth AP warrant is one million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents, and the payroll withholding is one hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. You also have an event permit for the Rotary Club for their Halloween Ball on October twenty-seventh, a deposit voucher for the Grassmere Town Hall Restoration Fund, grant agreement for the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security, Emergency Management for the Public Works radios, and we did get FEMA approval, that was in your packets on that one. Two thousand thirteen holiday schedule for Town Hall. Also, this one requires little discussion. This is a social media policy we adopted on October first. It's come to our attention that there have been changes on Facebook policy. You can't prevent people from posting comments to a Facebook business page. Also, if you set it up as a Facebook user instead of business page, then it violates Facebook's Terms of Service, and they recently blocked some government agencies out of their accounts for doing that. We're hoping that Facebook revises this recent change, but I thought it would make you aware of this, since our social media policy is for pushing out information, not being interactive, as we would need additional resources to monitor an interactive page. And our policy is pretty clear that it's pushing out. So if anyone wants to do a Facebook page, they'd have to come right now, under the current Facebook policy, and ask for a waiver from the board.
Okay.
Okay.
But Twitter, that we're fine with?
Right. That just pushes out.
Okay.
I believe. I'll have to check that one.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Okay. Need a motion on the consensus folder?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. The assessor has some recommendations for you tonight. Land use change tackling lien release on map nine, lot four dash forty-nine. Veterans tax credits recommended on map thirty-six, lot sixteen, and an intent cut on map four, lot twenty, and map five, lot sixty-one dash one, and ninety-five dash one.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four-zero.
Thank you. We also have a certification for posting of the warrant for the November election. A motion is needed to sign and certify that the warrants being, will be posted by October twenty-third, polling places.
Motion, aye.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appointment to Parks and Rec Commission on August eighth, an opening for regular member of the Parks and Rec Commission was posted on the town's website. Also, an ultimate one was posted on August twentieth, and we have received one application from Kevin Daigle, and that is in your packet.
How would the board like to proceed on this? If we don't have a full board, do we want to defer this till next week? Or is everyone comfortable with this application?
I'm comfortable making a motion.
Uncomfortable? You're comfortable?
Correct.
Okay. If you'd like to make the motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Daigle as an alternate on the Parks and Rec Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four-zero.
Who's the second, by Selectman Lemay?
Yes.
So we're leaving the full member one open? There were two openings, one on a full member and one on an alternate.
I believe that it say that he, was he, was he interested, Carlos, you know, in a, hold, let me read his application.
I thought it was two.
Do you know, Mark?
No, we're having our meeting Wednesday night, so.
You know, Brick had recommended him for the full member.
Okay.
I'm missing page two. Was there a page two to this? Because it seems just a stop. I don't think so. It just says, "I see the," and it ends. There was no page two on your master. Do you have the masters right there?
Let's do a contingent motion, Carlos. You wouldn't mind?
It appears as though he's applying for the full position. I mean, obviously it's cut short, but-
There was a page two? Okay, let's see. Did I hope you had page two when you said? See if there's any more information there.
We make a motion to appoint him as a full member, and if he so chooses to be an alternate, then he is approved for that.
Yeah, there's nothing that adds to the-
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, I guess, not amend, but to make a new motion.
Yeah, let me change my motion if I could. To appoint him as a, as a full-time-
Okay.
-member of the Parks and Rec Commission, contingent upon him accepting as a full-time.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for clarifying that.
New Hampshire Community Publications. This company is offering to publish five thousand full-color glossy roadmaps and guide to local businesses at no cost to the town, except that we would provide our mapping information to them. In your FYI, there was a sample of their map. It was nicely done for the town of, I think, Pembroke and Allentown. They go around and they solicit the ads to pay for the cost of this, and then we can distribute it at Town Hall and other locations.
When it says we would provide our mapping information, what information exactly would we be providing?
In GIS, the roadmap, so that they have the most up-to-date roadmap. We have forms when they sign off, it can only be used for that purpose type of thing. You can't, that data can't be shared with others.
Is there a motion to, to permit this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Local Government Center has chosen Goffstown to participate in a two-year pilot program provided by Compass Smart Shopper. All the administrative fees would be waived during this pilot period. Our health insurance enrollees would be eligible to participate in the Compass Smart Shopper program. If the enrollee needs a medical procedure covered by this program and shops the best rate with them, and uses the best rate, then they would receive a cash incentive directly from Compass. They have determined that twenty percent participation would be considered a success rate for this pilot program. You have more information at 8G in your packet. They did come in and present to the department heads last week, and we couldn't see any downside to this.
So basically, we have to ask the employees if they want to participate in the-
It's a volunteer program, so even if the town chooses to participate in the pilot program, there is no mandate for every enrollee to participate. It's totally voluntary.
Yes. I know we use it at the state, and it is very successful. It's a volunteer program, and it's worked out really well. So I'll make a motion to participate in the two-year pilot program for the Compass Smart Shopper.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by, I'll give that one to Selectman DeVanzo. I think he got you by second.
That's fine.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Thank you. And late last Friday, I sent you the Parks and Rec art of Go for the Goffstown News. You okay with that being submitted?
I read it looks good.
Okay.
Hopefully they won't edit it downward.
And I just wanted to report that we still have, we still do not have a tax rate for this year. It appears that there was an issue with their new MS one online data downloading into the tax rate calculation sheet. I don't think anyone has gotten a tax rate setting yet. But then again, you know, some of the forms, I think the MS twenty-four from the school wasn't submitted till like, it was a week last Friday. So they have to review that, and the education forms have to be reviewed by the Department of Education as well as DRA, so there's a delay there. But again, it will be done electronically this year, so I need to know from the board. There are two numbers. One is overlay, and one is fund balance. We had put in for ten thousand dollar use of overlay.
Right.
We keep it down because it's not a reval year.
Right.
When we have a reval year, that number increases. And fund balance, I think we've touched on that, that we weren't going to use fund balance since we, we were going to use it to keep a level tax rate. The tax rate in, in my estimation is going down anyway, even without the use of fund balance on the town side.
And that's simply because, you know, the voters did not-
Approve.
-support, did not approve many articles, of which, you know, one of them was the road program, that was a million dollars.
Right.
Which was previously in the budget, so even though it's going down, it's, it was due to the fact that, you know, the voters did not approve several warrant articles, several special articles that were on the ballot, so. So in terms of, from the direction from Sue, for Sue, with respect to the fund balance, if everyone is in agreement of not using any fund balance, then that's, that's, we need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion to use zero dollars of fund balance to lower the tax rate, because the tax rates are already going to be lower. Is there a second to that?
One second.
Seconded by Selectman Lemay. Any discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Okay. And should we be fortunate enough to get a tax rate setting and be able to do it electronically this week? I assume you authorize staff to go forward doing that, right?
Yeah, your motion, just, this is official. And seconded by Selectman Lemay. Mark, you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion which will allow staff to set the tax rate electronically, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
So Sue, I think we're, was there any other business that you had?
No. I should do it.
Aye. We, did you, did you want to chat about that email from the LGC, or is that something you want to do later, outside of another point in time?
We can do that. We did get our rates today, informally on the phone. I don't have them. The package should be coming in this week. But we had estimated an increase of ten percent on our health insurance for next year, because that's typically the average in the past three years. It's only five point four percent next year for medical insurance. And dental insurance is only a one point two percent increase. Property liability insurance did not go up at all, so we will be adjusting all those numbers in your budget, but because we got that information so late, staff didn't have time to plug it all into the formula. The, what other insurances are? Workers' Comp is as budgeted, so there's no changes in that. So that is a nine percent increase using the current mod factor.
Why would the increase be so low? Do you have any idea?
No.
No.
I'm gonna guess it has something to do with claims. But then they also, we're doing a great job.
Wellness is working.
Wellness is working. There, they also mentioned in that email that there would be a contribution holiday. This is based on the surplus from two thousand eleven. We will get one contribution holiday in December of this year. So there's a lot of discussion going on on listserv amongst different municipalities, and which, what do you do with this contribution holiday? Basically, it equates to about sixty-seven thousand roughly, okay? So that will be up here as a credit on the December bill.
A contribution holiday is what?
Okay, I mean, I can explain that.
I mean, I can guess at it, but-
Yeah, but it basically, it says is that holidays, you don't have to pay your premiums for the, you know, for the month. That's traditionally how it works. So let's say for an example that your claims experience is, is lower than what you had projected, so it's very favorable, so rather than giving you a, giving you a check, they just say, okay, we're not going to cut you a check, but you just have to pay your premiums for this month. So in this particular case, it's not really, it doesn't represent a full month. It represents about three percent of our, right? Is it about-
Well, a monthly payment is around a hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
So it's-
I was talking total.
Oh, total, yes.
Right.
It represents about three percent of their surplus.
Okay. So this is where I think we should have a little bit of discussion, and this will probably get us to the six-thirty hour when we have our, our next meeting. You know, the question that we have is that it's not really just our, the municipality's money, because there are contributions that our employees make towards health insurance. We have a few individuals who pay one hundred percent. They're either elected officials, or they're-
Retirees.
-retirees, and they're paying one hundred percent of their, of the premium. I, I think in fairness, what might be the best idea is to simply return on a percentage basis to all, you know, to all individuals who, who would be, receive, you know, regarding the sixty-seven thousand dollars. So if somebody paid one hundred percent, then, then they would get that, it would be proportional for them. The town would obviously, if we're paying ninety percent of the premium, and the employee is paying ten, then obviously they would, they would get back their proportionate share of that ten percent. Seems to be pretty fair.
It will be an administrative nightmare.
Yeah, it'll be difficult to-
But it would be fair. What I would have preferred to see is a rate adjustment.
Yeah, which is a lot easier-
Yeah.
-the following year. But that's not what happened.
So I, yeah, but I don't know if there's going to be pushback because of the administration of-
Yeah.
... contribution holiday. There may be pushback, I don't know, because everyone's discussing, you know, how do you do that? And, you know, people change plans in the middle of the year, so.
It's a little bit of a headache, but-
Yeah, it is a headache to administer, but we, we have to figure out the fairest, most equitable way of doing it. But I'm waiting for more information from other towns and-
This will be a next, next, probably a next week topic for us, so.
Yes, yeah.
But it is, it's a good thing, but it just creates-
Yes, it's a good thing. It's just-
Challenge, yeah.
Yeah, the challenge of implementing it.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay. It's almost, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, that's it.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Are you expecting anyone else other than yourself?
Sally's here.
Okay.
We can start if we want to.
Okay, is there, was there another woman, Alice? Is she expected?
Fiori, no. She's the owner, she's not coming.
Okay. Would it be okay if we started five minutes early? Okay, would you mind coming up? And Sally, are you expected to have any dialogue with the board as well? Would you like to come on up as well, or Mr. Mitchell will be representing you? Okay.
All set?
Yes, we are.
My name is Eric Mitchell, and my company prepared the plans here for Sally Argierio, who is, is looking to purchase the property from Alice Fiori, who's the owner. It's an existing lot with an existing house and garage on it, on Twenty-One Channel Lane. And Channel Lane is a private road, according to Public Works down in this particular area. What the proposal that the buyers have is to take down the existing garage, garages here, the house and the deck, and build a new multi-story building with a garage underneath. We've been through several of the town's boards and commissions, as well as through the state for shoreland permits, and have received all of those. And so the last thing we have on our list is to come to the Selectman, because it is a private road. We had been before the zoning board on the private issue, and they have granted variance on that part. We have also been to the planning board for a review and comment of being on a private road. And according to Brian Rose, the town planner, the only concern the planning board had is whether or not there was the pavement that we proposed is any wider than what is there existing, and it is not. So we have defiled this in agreement with the section of your zoning ordinance, as well as the statute, to ask the Selectman for approval to redevelop the lot on a private road. The house was originally built in about nineteen forty, according to the tax records, and the road services other, at least two of the properties down further to the south. And we realized that you have a indemnification form and letter, which the owners are willing to do, but because they, the buyers are willing to do, because they don't own it yet, they didn't want to do it until they go get a building permit, and then they would file it at that time.
Okay. The board, is there any questions for Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I believe you went before the Conservation Commission as well, right?
Yes.
No issues of concern after some discussion.
Correct.
Okay. So just to recap, this has been okayed by the planning board, by the Conservation Commission, uh-
Zoning Board.
-zoning board, et cetera. So this is just a one final approval by the board with respect to a waiver of municipal liability, because it's a private road, and seems pretty straight-cut, straightforward. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
You have a question? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Mitchell, could you just explain briefly, basically, how the property is being improved from what was there?
Yeah. Well, what is there today? And I had submitted plans, but I don't know if they came to you.
It's up on pillars.
Just so that everybody can be aware of what would-
The lot line is what's in the darker color through here. The lot itself is, has wider width on the, the Scotty Quag as it does against the property here. Property line comes down through here. The existing deck is actually slightly over the property line. The existing house, which is here, is within a couple feet of the lot line in a couple places, and the existing garage here is about a foot away from the lot line. I don't know if when things were built, people thought the lot was more rectangular, so it came out through here. I don't know that. But I do know that the lot line is where we show it. What the proposal is, is to take the, the deck, existing house and the garage down, but a new structure up, which is a, pretty much a square with a deck on the front. This will have a garage underneath, which will be elevated above the, the garage floor will be still within the flood level, but all the livable space, which is about three feet higher than the slab, will be well above the flood level. So there's a lot of things that we took into play with this in order to create it. We maintain the side setback of fifteen feet to the existing property over here, where we receive the variances to be close to the property, is town-owned property where the sewage pump station is.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment, that, that, this is, this is an improvement over what was there, and that's the reason why I want Mr. Mitchell to explain, so that everybody understands[1670.23]
how the issue is, as he said, that once, one structure went over the property line, we don't have that. So this is, this has made improvements.
Right. And what, what is important to the way it's written throughout the ordinance, this is a redevelopment of an existing lot. If this was a vacant lot, there'd be different circumstances, but this is an existing, built-on lot, and we are actually doing improvements for a new building, which will be less non-conforming than the one that's there. So it's all moving in the correct direction.
It's also more narrowly conforming to the Surface Water Quality Protection Act. The primary structures moved further back. I think there's some stormwater considerations with pervious pavement?
We have reduced the amount of impervious cover from what there is today between the roofs of all the buildings. And we have less roof, and also the area of the gravel drive will be all pervious pavers, the walkway pervious pavers. And we have an infiltration trench along the south side of the building, so the water will go down back into the ground, which from the state standpoint is a big improvement over what's currently there. Prevents water from going straight into the river.
Okay, anyone else like to comment? Not hearing any comments, I need a motion then?
Make the motion.
To grant approval and to, hold on, approval contingent upon signing and recording a waiver of municipal liability form by the owner, current owner.
Correct, second.
Okay, second by Selectman Adams. Kathy, you got all that?
Yes.
Okay, all those, and any comments before we get, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, your concise presentation.
I've had a lot of practice.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You're all set. Good luck with everything.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, well, you hired him, so that's a good job, right? Okay, so we took care of that. We have a hearing at seven o'clock. Let's try to get, see if we can pick off some other things on our agenda. If we could, let's go, if you, if we don't mind, I'd like to try to tackle committee reports and get that out of the way. We'll start off with the sewer commission.
Sure, the sewer commission met on October ninth, discussed the Mastro paving. In fact, the paving is complete, and striping will be finished as soon as weather permits.
Yeah, I get a lot of questions on that from, from folks, I mean, and I, is it?
You get bombarded every day.
Carl, so would it be fair, I, I've said to folks that we, we scheduled it in, and because of rain, it had, that had to get rescheduled. And if another municipality or another customer had that day scheduled already, then we basically have to get bumped to an open spot in their schedule. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, that's fair enough. I mean, it's just basically trying to find someplace in the schedule with the strippers that they can fit us in. It's not all a bad thing, by the way. I mean, it's best to let the pavement cure as much as possible, because some of the oils come out of it before you lay down the striping. So even though it seems as though it's a bit of an inconvenience, there are certain benefits to be, be gained by it. But, but we're in there, we're in the queue, and we'll, we'll get the next shot at it. Let's see, the Reed Street, Temple Court sewer line replacements, they've been installed, and the pavement's put down. Next spring, the top coat paving will be done. Inter-municipal agreement with City of Manchester. We've got a meeting scheduled for December tenth at the Manchester wastewater treatment plant for the new IMA final approval. And then there's a discussion on the Noel Crest sewer accessibility fees. Last quarterly invoice, a ten-year loan was mailed in September. Properties have been paid in full. The redemptions of lien are recorded, and the registered deeds and copies are mailed to the property owners. That was some reason to meet.
Thank you. Any questions for Collins? All right, next would be the planning board.
Planning board did meet the other night, last week, and there was three items that they dealt with. One of the items was a lot line adjustment, which was over on Cove Street. And that was the, that's map twenty-one lots fifty-six and fifty-seven. Again, it was a small lot line adjustment, and that was approved with recommended conditions of approval that a note be added that the references ZBA decision, which was a, a one-time, and not a, not, not a blanket approval from the ZBA. Then there was an, a request for an extension from the Cornerstone Baptist Church, which is looking at occupying the property. It used to be the vacuum, vacuum cleaner property on a corner of Mastro.
Yeah.
Doing it that way, because most people probably be more familiar with it as the vacuum cleaner location. So there was a request to continue that, so that they could have some further discussion with staff. And the final thing was a lot line adjustment, a minor lot line adjustment for the Black Briar Woods project, which is that new development. There was a, because of the terrain, when a surveyor measured off of the two pens, because of the angle, the taping on angle, so, you know, we were told that there was about a six to nine-inch error on the location. So they just made a slight lot line adjustment between the two lots to make up for it. It was very minor, did not even affect the front, the front monumentation, and it was just relocated the back end, but.
Okay, any questions for Selectman Davanzan then? Not hearing any. Is there any old business that we would like to discuss? I had, I had one. We were supposed to get something from Drescher on an opinion with trash pickup, right? Recycling and trash. Are we gonna, hopefully, and wasn't there another thing he was supposed to give us an opinion on?
He's working on the agreements, the formal agreements.
The agreements, right, okay. So we know when we're gonna?
No, I talked to him last week, and I asked him to get them to you as soon as possible.
My other question that I had was with the, with the agreements, was there, where is this whole Lamson Ab things?
That's one of the agreements he's working on.
Okay, so he's got two sets of agreements?
Yes.
Okay. Because one of my concerns, especially with the Lamson Ab one, was it's contingent upon an agreement, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Right. So. I mean, we had a storm on, on Halloween last year, so I just wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, that's beyond our control.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I did have one other under old business. I received an email today from Gail Lebreck relative to our discussions on the minute takers, and how we were gonna pay those folks. As you recall, we had some discussion about that. I do have a rather lengthy email from her. I just saw it minutes before coming in, she sent it to me at four fifty-four. I can send it around to the rest of the selectmen if you'd like, so we can maybe bring it up at the next meeting.
Sure.
Be appropriate?
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. If there isn't any other old business, is there any new business before we start talking about budgets? Okay.
I was ready to make a cloud of habit, I was ready to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, we can't, we have a public hearing, so.
I know, but I'm.
The, the difficulty here is I don't, I don't, I hope that we don't make any type of budgetary motions without a full board. I think that would not be a, a good idea. But I think it would be good to talk about a, perhaps a framework on how we're going to approach the budget. If there's any information that Sue or the staff might need to obtain for us, this, that would be something that we could request for, you know, for next week. But I just wanted to try to just facilitate a dialogue on how we're going to approach this. What type of target are we looking at? Let's try, try to maybe look at some of the numbers. An overview of the numbers.
Just something to consider and have some discussion with, because typically, we go through the budget. We cut a little here, we cut a little there. We go into CIP, we take some things and volunteer, maybe a department comes in and they, they voluntarily take something out to move it out for some reason. And we do all of this, and then we're looking at a number, and we're still very big, and then we're sitting here. What a big discussions of where to go. And I guess one of the thoughts that I had, and part of what I brought up last week in the exercise, the reason why I asked it last week, was perhaps if we look at the things that, prioritizing the things as the most important. In other words, instead of cutting the things that we could do without the easiest, look at the things that need to be prioritized in, in the highest priority. Because if we take the things that are highest priority, and we take them out of the discussion, it leaves the other items. And I just thought that perhaps from that type of an approach, we might have a different type of the discussion, and it might be a little more productive.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts? Selectman Adams, you mentioned, and I agreed with you a couple of weeks ago, that it'd be nice to have some sort of a target or, you know, kind of goal as to what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. You want to expand on that, or?
Well, I, I think it's better to start there and work backwards. Work backwards into the budget. What, what's palatable to the taxpayers? I think we've already had some good news tonight, certainly, based upon the information we're getting already on our insurance rates and whatnot. And it seems to me to be a more prudent way to go about it. Otherwise, you'd end up developing a number that may build and may build and may build, and in the end, you're looking at some tax increase, possibly. But given our historical experience with the voters over the last few years, and in these economic times, doesn't stand much of a chance of moving forward. So it just seems to make a whole lot more sense to me to start with a number and work back into a budget from there.
Okay. The way I was trying to, you know, get my arms around this was to take a look at some of the items that, I'm not saying we don't have any, you know, control over, but we sometimes don't. I mean, we don't have control over our retirement costs, we don't have control many times over the healthcare insurance. And that, that being said, however, we do have control, because we ultimately determine how many staff members we have, and, you know, employees in the town. So ultimately, you know, you can control your budget dollars, but, and then kind of look at what are some of the positives? Like, you know, this payroll, I mean, this holiday that we're going to get, which is going to be sixty-seven thousand, or health insurance rates, which we budgeted at ten percent, which will now be five point four percent, and try to, you know, come to grips with that. Then, and, and could we conceivably have a very similar budget? Or what will that look like in terms of an increase from, say, last year's budget? Because I think we all know that CIP is the area where the vast majority of the dollars are coming from. And then, and then I think, and maybe not next week, but the week after that, what are, what are the ones that are the highest priority, as you were saying, Phil? And then how can we, what tools do we have to pay for things? So. If I, if I, if I fast forward and I, and I say, is it fair enough to say that use of fund balance is something that we're probably going to do this year? Is that fair enough?
I think it needs to be considered. I think it's, it's a resource available to us, and, you know, if it can help us attain some of the goals without putting any, shifting any burden onto the taxpayers, then I think we need to look at that.
Okay.
Question is, where do we use it?
Right, so, and.
And how much do we lose?
Right, exactly.
So the other question, I think, which would help matters is another thing that we chatted about was the potential, you know, was bonding. And is there anything that is bondable? Now that, you know, if we, if we go that route, it requires a sixty percent vote, which is often difficult. But by the same token, if we get out ahead of it, and we decide that we do want to bond, and we do our very best to explain to the voters why, yes, spending, you know, borrowing money at a very, very low interest rate for something is the right thing to do. Many people have mortgages, or they have loans on cars and things of that nature. So borrowing is not uncommon for people out, out there. We do have an incredibly low debt burden, which our auditors told us. So is that something that, are we open to considering a bond for any of our CIP items? I mean, some of them, we haven't gotten to things like a fire station improvement plan, but that is usually lends itself to a bond. We haven't really, you know, our DPW director is here, we've never done a road bond before, but it's a possibility. I just, do we want to have those discussions? Or, you know, if we want to, I think in fairness to Carl, there are some municipalities who have done road bonds, or they bonded different things, and that would help Carl to talk to other municipalities, see how it went, if that's a route that we want to consider. I, I don't know, I'm just throwing that idea out.
I believe it's an avenue that should be explored. I wouldn't, I wouldn't close the door on that one right away. I mean.
Okay.
Something that's, I think is on the table, probably prematurely to, you know, figure out which way we're going to go. But it gives us some, some ideas to options that we may have.
Yeah, and I think that, to me, what you said, the key word is options.
Correct.
Because, this is just me speaking, is that I would like the option of maybe what a road bond would look like, and what would be the cost of that road bond? Could we accomplish what we need to do? What are the laws in terms of spending, you know, money? Do you have to spend it all within a certain period of time? Or could you stretch your, and, and Carl, when we, after seven o'clock when we have this hearing, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'll have the three of you up here, because we're going to be kind of going through this anyway. But if we, if we, in order to even consider as an option, you need to say, one, is it legal? Two, has it ever been done, you know, has it been done before? What are the pros and what are the cons, and, and that type of thing? And I think you're right, Phil, I think we, we are going to have to take a look at what are some of our mission, more mission-critical things? And what are some things that they are needed, but we're going to have to put it off? It is, you know, it is what it is, so. You know, I, I was looking through the, you know, the budget, and when we talk about some of the things that our retirement costs have gone up, you know, considerably. And I, and I'm, and Sue, I'm not going to hold you to the, to the number, but a ballpark for all of our departments, our town budget, what, what is, what did our, our retirement portion increase? Was it two hundred thousand?
I don't have that number in the.
Okay, it's all, it's all broken down by?
Different groups and different departments.
Depends on group one or two.
But I think, you know, some of, when you look through the.
I think it's more like a hundred and forty thousand townwide.
Townwide, okay. Because what I'm trying to, you know, grapple with is, we know we have a half percent increase in our valuation. So that gives you a little bit of, what does that kind of equate to? We're seeing, we'll, we'll see a difference in what we budgeted for health insurance, and what it's actually, you know, we know, we, we know what that's going to look like. We're going to have that premium holiday, which is a sixty-seven thousand dollars. So, you know, is it possible for us to try to, some of these things like salary increases, retirement, insurance, could we possibly be balanced out between the increase in the, in the growth rate, the sixty-seven thousand dollar holiday, the, you know, the reduction in the health insurance? What will that, you know, gin out to? Because when I looked through the budget, with some exceptions, by and large, most of these lines were level funded, and they've been level funded for four years now, five years. The bigger ticket items are typically the ones in, in, in the CIP, so.
The, just to clarify, the sixty-seven thousand, that was, that's a.
This year.
This year. Next year is sixty-eight.
Eight, okay.
Plus eleven thousand for dental, and twenty-eight thousand for property liability.
Okay, so we're over, we're over a hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that's, that's encouraging news, I mean.
And I also want to clarify, this has nothing to do with the pending case that's being appealed.
This is basically a situation where they, the LGC determines what, they make an educated guess as to what their, their claims experience is going to be, premiums, et cetera. Their guess ended up being, I guess, pretty conservative, and there was a surplus.
Yes.
And rather than retain the surplus, they're distributing it back to the members of communities.
Right, and what you receive in December two thousand twelve is based upon the two thousand eleven surplus.
Surplus, yeah. All right. Any other ideas as to how we want to proceed? You know, for those in the audience, we, you know, I think it's been shared publicly. I mean, we met with the school board a couple of weeks ago, and we did discuss some of our capital reserve, our capital items, CIP items. And the school also discussed, I think, a couple of, of theirs. One was the renovation to Bartlett and Maple Avenue School, and they're unsure about what they're doing, whether they're going to put that on the ballot in March or not. And they haven't come to a decision with respect to the other warrant article they had last year, whether they're going to proceed with that or not. So I think we still need to have, you know, continued dialogue. And, and we chatted about that, continuing that conversation. And that, I thought the consensus was that it would be the budget committee person and the chairman would, would have that continued, you know, meeting. So if it's okay, I'll set something up, you know, I'll, I'll get with Dave, and we'll, we'll, we'll get a meeting together with him. And I think it would be helpful if Sue and, and Stacy were also involved in that as well, so that when it comes to the hardcore numbers, everybody kind of knows what's, what we're dealing with.
At the joint meeting, the school board said they weren't prepared to do that, because they hadn't gotten the proposed budget from their department.
Right, so.
Do they have those yet, do we know?
I think that was scheduled for this week, right?
I don't know. They typically, yeah, get them in October. But their, their process is always like, lags like a month and a half or two months after ours.
They're closer, though, this year. Because I, I was watching the budget committee meeting, and they're going to be presenting their budget to the budget committee like November seventh or something. So there's, it, it's close, if that laps, it's not there in terms of submission to the budget committee.
But they're in the same situation. I mean, we have a, you know, a very large increase in our retirement contribution cost, but they have, I think, three times as many employees as we do. So theirs is going to be a lot higher than, than, than we have. And I also, for, you know, for clarity, I want to let folks out there know, this is not just a cost that's borne by municipalities. I mean, the employees are also bearing a higher cost to make up for the, the unfunded liabilities of the, of the pension plans, so. I think what I'd like to do now is, we might as well take a brief recess until seven o'clock, in case anybody needs to take a break. And if that's okay with everyone. So if it's okay, we'll, we'll recess until seven o'clock, at, at which time we'll have a quick public hearing. And then after that, we'll, we'll get into our budget discussions. All right? Thanks. Welcome back, everyone. It's seven PM. And just so everyone knows, we took a brief recess about seven to ten minutes. Right now, I'd like to bring up our police chief, Pat Sullivan, and.
This public hearing is for public works.
Oh, it's public works, I'm sorry, scratch that. Sorry, Carl, it's you. No, I saw the whole thing with the highway safety and everything.
Same grant.
Same grant, though.
Different purpose.
All right, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to open the public hearing. And this is a public hearing to accept and expend fifty three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars of emergency management performance grant from the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the upgrade of the Department of Public Works radio system. So I know this has been a extension of grants that we have gotten for both our police and fire departments. And it was recognized, I guess, over the last year that we need to upgrade our our DPW radio equipment as well because we're, we constantly communicate with each other during emergencies and just during regular day to day operations. So we were able to procure this grant. And this is that, this is the public hearing for for that purpose. So is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this grant? There is no one in the public here. Is there anyone from the board who would like to comment? All right. That being the case, since there are no public comment, we will close the public hearing for the emergency management grant.
Make a motion if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
I'd like, make a motion to accept and expend fifty three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars emergency management performance grant from the Hampshire Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the upgrade of the Public Work Department's radio system.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Selectman DeVanz, any discussion?
Scott, if I could just add, just for the information of the viewing public. This is, you know, the reason for the upgrade, certainly we do need to communicate with police and fire. But it's also part of the emergency services narrowbending requirements. And come January first, we have to be off our old frequencies.
Unless we get fined, right? That's it, yeah.
Yeah, so there, I mean, there are, there's a big stick waving around in the background too if we don't go forward with this. So this really is an opportunity for half of the cost of the project to be borne by the federal budget instead of all local funds. The upside to this, we we had a meeting with the two chiefs and myself with our radio vendor. And, you know, it looks like the system we're moving towards, provided we get the appropriate FCC licenses, because we couldn't really formalize the licensing until we knew exactly how much money we'd have to work with. So that's all underway now. We should have an answer by the middle of this week on how many frequencies we we have at our disposal. But it looks like we're headed towards a radio that we will be able to communicate directly with with fire and with police through dispatch. And equally importantly is is we can communicate with other DPW organizations around the state. We are part of the statewide mutual aid. So it'll be a benefit to us that if we did have to leave town and work with someone else or if we had another community coming to assist us in a disaster, the radios will be capable of communicating back and forth with other agencies as well. So it's it's a good step, there's a lot of good reasons to do it. And and thankfully, the grant was available to help us with the cost burden.
What's your match, Carl?
It's a fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty, and you have it this year in your budget?
Okay, any other questions or comments? Not hearing any, we have a motion on the on the table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Gentlemen, I don't know if you want to come on up, because we're gonna be talking about the budget. And I believe most of the department heads here, so we can, you know, kind of have that have that dialogue. Carl, before you you got here, we we're not really gonna be making any motions simply because Selectman Pierce is not, Chairman Pierce is not here. But we're just trying to get, if there are any items that we need more information from from the department heads, this is a good time to ask that. So it gives you a week, you know, to to do that. What I'd like to do is if if I could, and that is, if we could just take a look at this first page, which talks about our assumptions. And. I want to try to frame this so that we're not operating in a in a vacuum. One of the things that's that that I think, you know, concerned me last year is that there was a lot of choices for voters to make, which is fine, they they can make the choices. But it sometimes is good to to minimize some things as as best we can. Going into this, we are hopeful to have one of our collective bargaining agreements in March, right? We have our DPW, our Teamsters contract, which we hope to have on on the on the ballot. So I just want to, we need to kind of keep that in play, that, you know, in in my personal opinion, you know, having ratified contracts with our union members is is a very important thing. For me, it's always been a priority to make sure that we reach a balance and and we get a fair, equitable agreement with them. And then we work aggressively to try to educate the community. So we're still not at a at an agreement, Rick, you can come on up. We're still not at a at any type of stage with regard to any type of tentative agreement. Is that correct?
We have a tentative agreement that at the table, but they had to take it back to their side first. It's not official.
Right. I I think, you know, certainly, speaking only for myself, I mean, the quicker that we have a tentative agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Teamsters is a good thing because it gives us the opportunity to then let people know what's part of this. And I think last year, there was a lot of confusion as to why was there more of an impact on one of the bargaining unit agreements and not the other? And people kind of got confused about that. So there's only one, hopefully, this time, so, but that'll be our opportunity to do that. So I just want to say that we we are gonna have, hopefully, one warrant article that will deal with collective bargaining agreement. We talked, so then in our other ones will be in what, two thousand? When do those, those will be renegotiated next?
We'll be negotiating next year.
Next year.
Because they expire at the end of next year.
We have our bargaining units, we have a three point two five percent adjustment on our, whether that be, and that's in either no steps but cost of living, correct? Is that pretty much all three, that's all of them, I believe?
Every, yeah, all three collective bargaining agreements and the non-union.
Right.
I've been budgeted that way, effective July first.
So just so everybody is on, everybody understands, is that we have a ratified contract with our unions, our bargaining units. And historically, the board has done something similar with our non-union employees. That's not to say that, there was one year when we when we didn't, but that's that's a discussion. So if the board wishes to have a discussion about making any adjustment upward or downward of the three point two five for non-union employees, that's something that this board can have a discussion about, but we cannot have a discussion about the union. That's already been ratified, done, approved by the voters. The hours, our PEG TV coordinator, if we go forward with that, we are looking, we're gonna see a decrease in our overall revenue of about, what was it, sixty, fifty thousand, around fifty-ish? About fifty thousand dollars, because we would use two percent of the cable franchise fee and that'd be to go directly towards GTV, which would be a net impact to our revenue line of about fifty thousand. So just keep keep that in mind. In terms of hours, police were restoring some funding for a patrolman and a part-time custodian, so that's that's in there. Luckily for number three, we we assumed ten percent on the health insurance and it's five point four. The dental is one point.
Two.
Two, and property and.
Property is down number six.
Right.
And that's a zero percent increase.
And that's zero, okay. Workers' comp rates are the same, which we what we budgeted.
Same that we budgeted.
Budgeted. And electricity, are we getting anything more on them? Are we pretty sure that this thing will be around a five percent increase?
Yeah, they, that's what they're estimating, five percent increase.
So that's a done deal. Heating oil, that's contracted, that's contracted.
Yes.
So all those other things are, and I think we've had a pretty good success with, I know it's a contentious issue all the time with the budget committee, but I think that the consensus has always been, we take a look at what our historical usage is, what are contracted prices? And that's how we budget. And we've been using three-year average consumption. And that seems to deal with sometimes when you have spikes or cold weather or warmer than usual weather and and it has some impact there. So I think that's, and we're waiting on diesel.
Yes, that's the only one that you probably have to make an adjustment on before you conclude your budget process.
So.
And not in the right direction.
I I'll bring this up, I know sometimes it's the, it raises eyebrows. But the other thing that the board can discuss, doesn't have to, and that is health insurance. We're, we saw that we are getting a more favorable increase than the ten percent that's budgeted. But there are opportunities there, if the board desires to go that route, to look at alternatives in that in that area. And if you remember, we had a presentation from local government center, Health Trust, and they went through the different drivers of the cost. And if we're going to be having a discussion about health insurance, whether that's different plans, contributions, et cetera, then that would be a decision that we would, that we should be embarking upon now. Again, we cannot do anything for the ones that have been collectively bargained for. But again, this would be for our non-union folks. So I say that because this typically, the health insurance is the long-term driver, is pretty significant. I mean, we've seen, it's it's one of those costs that keeps going up and up. Not so much on here, oh, our retire. Not so much on here, um, oh, our, uh, retirement system, number five. Um, so we are seeing pretty hefty increases there, um, ten point seven, seven percent increase in group one.
No, that's not the increase, that's the rate.
That's the rate, I'm sorry, right. But it's an increase from
I think it was eight point nine.
Eight, right. Um, and Sue is going to get us
I've got it right here. It's a hundred and thirty-one thousand townwide for six months, because it's July first.
Right. So it is a two, so overall, it'll be a two hundred and thirty thou- uh, two hundred and sixty thousand, yeah.
Two hundred and sixty-two thousand. That's everyone.
That's everybody.
That's everyone. I've, I've got the breakdown by department if you needed that.
And again, just to, just so that, for those who might be listening or watching on, on television, a couple of issues there. What's driving some of this is, um, the pension plans are underfunded, so we have unfunded liabilities in the pension plan. Not to go into too long of a spiel on this, but, um, there's pros and cons on both sides. For many years, municipalities, the legislature said that municipalities didn't have to contribute to the pension plans, because there were some good times. And, and municipalities didn't contribute anything while employees still did. And now we're in a, we've been in an era where the economy has been tougher, investment yields have been lower, and the pensions are not funded where they need to be. So in order to get them where they need to be, rates need to be increased, not just for the municipalities, but also for the individual members. So when we talk about, you know, a two or three percent increase, uh, for us, there's also a corresponding increase for the employees who have to pay more for, for their pension. And when you take a look at group two, uh, police and fire, you say, oh my gosh, you know, we're contributing twenty-five percent of our, um, of wages that go towards retirement for, uh, police, twenty-seven point seven-four for fire. Uh, both entities do not get social security, so sometimes people, you know, kind of confuse that. So they don't, they don't, they're not eligible for social security, and the town does not pay social security taxes on, on their behalf. And there were also, if I'm not mistaken, some changes, I think, in group two with respect to, uh, last legislature, right? Where they made some tweaks to, now it's twenty-five years of service, I think, chief?
For new hires.
For new hires. And it's, and did they change anything with the length of time, or were there, was there spiking something on?
Spiking was repealed.
Spiking was repealed, right.
There were some changes. Um, I know there's still court action pending on those changes.
Okay. So that's kind of ongoing, but that is a fairly large, as we said, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars just for six months. And then the ne- the following year, that's over a quarter million dollar impact, so that, we had some good news, that's some bad news. Overall, um, in terms of town staffing, we have not had any new hires, I believe, in three to four years. Um, the last staffing increase we had in the town was safer grant for firefighters.
That's about five years ago.
That was two thousand eight.
Yep, two thousand eight. So we have, we have actually gone down one or two positions, um, in the town, um, collectively. Um, our, some of our entities, under the library, they are indep- they're independent of this board, but they reduced hours and, and did, did other things to try to, uh, seal with budget issues, so. And again, just to recap, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll let the Budget Committee know this tomorrow, uh, there's a lot, not a lot of them attended, but Sue, for the town, for town hall, you put most of the, uh, benefits in, in, in your
In the admin line.
Admin line, and that was due to HIPAA
HIPAA, yes.
Regulations, so.
And that also affected DPW, because they had one person in cemetery, and that's now under DPW operations.
Okay.
But we left you solid wastes alone, because you had enough people in that one.
So a- as we go to the next page, is, you know, just as a, as a, as a summary, I mean, you know, we're looking at a, um, a requested department head, uh, increase of about six point five percent for administration, about five percent for public works. Police, uh, around eight percent, fire about six percent, Parks and Rec four point seven, library two. Um, the, so those numbers, I'm sure we're going to ta- discuss them, but those aren't, you know, the scary numbers. The scary numbers is the CIP number. And that's because over the years, um, we've seen a very steady decrease in what we have been spending for capital improvements. And last year was at an all-time, I shouldn't say all-time low, it was at the lowest it's been in, I, I think it's like eight, nine year, maybe even longer than that. So we were typically spending in the three and a half million dollar range, and I think last year we spent like one point seven or something, so. So I think this is where we're going to have our, um, personally, I think this is where we're going to have most of our, most of our challenge. If I could just try to, I want to try to go to, to CIP and maybe try to tackle or have some discussion, Phil, about what you said before, about what are some of the, um, the larger projects that, um, may be suitable for use of fund balance? Because when our auditor was here, the auditor said, you could do it, but you should do it on something that's a one-time expenditure. You should not be doing it for dealing with retirement costs, you know? Um, if I, and I believe Or road, right, so
Ongoing.
Ongoing, ongoing expenses. So, um, so that being the case, um, if we would, if we take a look at, at CIP, um,
Tab seven?
It'll just tab seven. And I'm just going to use the whiteboard.
If we don't mind here, so.
I think all the materials are under the podium that you need for.
So, Phil, you, you said before, we probably should try to prioritize, I think.
Yeah, uh, if I can elaborate, uh, just thought if we went through them and prioritized the projects. I mean, you, we don't have to go in and prioritize every single one.
Right.
But if we prioritize even the top three
Okay.
Items, which we kind of did, you know, I threw that out at the board, uh, last meeting, and we kind of did. And, uh, we all agreed that the road plan was the number one thing. And if you could look at that, the road, uh, not, uh, not the road, I'm sorry, the financial software. Financial software was the number one thing, because without, uh, uh, the financial software, we're, we're all dead in the water, basically. And that, I think qualifies, because that's a one-time, uh, purchase, because it's not something that's ongoing, and it's critical to all the departments.
Okay, that's one. And that said, your pavilion, Rick, is not a priority, but
It's fine, it's all good.
We're just trying to go through this.
It's all good.
I'm just going to take my, I'm sure this is going to be hard for Andrew to, to, as I try to facilitate this using a whiteboard, but, sorry, Andrew. Okay. So if we're on the first tab, which is, um, what I'd like to do is, I'm just going to do, uh, so we've got our CIP priorities, and I'm just going to try to maybe put them in a couple of different columns, if that's fair, as we go through this. So I'll make this, uh, as the A-list, then we'll make this the B and a C. We have our cemetery expansion first, that's the first thing. I'm not saying that's where, where it stands, but the cemetery expansion, Carl, that is going to, what does that entail? Thirty-two thousand dollars, and that's going to finish up
Forty thousand.
Forty, I apologize.
Almost forty-one.
Forty-one. Okay, forty, I apologize, forty-one.
It, uh, the trustees are working through a, kind of a budgeting problem in this current year. So what that finishes up kind of depends on how they decide to solve this year's problem. But the goal is to have it ready to take burials, um, by next year.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal.
How much of that is the fence?
Right.
Well, they would be much better to address this, the, because there are many options with the fence, and I don't want to give a foregone conclusion.
Yeah, I know, but they were discussing trying to take, uh, their perpetual funds through a side parade process to release those funds to pay for part of this.
Well, part of what I'm trying to drive at is, um, let's just say that hypothetically, that a lot of that was for landscaping, or, I mean, could we potentially stretch this out over two years as opposed to it has to, you know, get, now the law is on our side, where we don't have to put, I, I'm, I personally am in support of a fence.
Right.
But that, if it means that we have to do it a year or two from now, then, then maybe that's, I don't, I don't know, but
Well, the lan- landscaping was not part of next year's plan.
It wasn't, okay.
It was surveying.
Surveying.
And finishing the fence.
Okay, and I, that's, my, my, my recollection was that somebody has to come in, and they're very precise when they come in, with exactly where everything
Yep.
is going. So where does everybody, is this A, B, C, where do you, where do we see this thing? Anyone? I don't think it's an A.
As far as which?
Cemetery.
Well, the surveying part is important, because you can't bury anyone without the survey.
Well, the, the surveying, depending on the fence situation, the surveying could be done this year.
Oh.
The cemetery is finished enough that we could do the surveying this year with the funds we have, at least a good section of survey. And then the fence could be dealt with next year.
Had, uh, there was a discussion at one time of doing surveying in phases. How many phases would be feasible?
Yeah, honestly, as many as you need. Once the control's laid in there, you can survey a piece at a time.
When I say this, I'm not, I'm not, we, we have the, uh, the, the job of having to go through a lot of these things and, and prioritize as to what we can fund, what we can't fund. I'm not, they're all noble, but what can be done now? Or what can we, you know, maybe somehow stagger in? Um, okay, we'll, we'll, I'll move on here.
We came to question though, you said ready to accept burials, like to be ready to accept them next year? Is that because we have to, we're at capacity, I mean, we're maxed out, it's
Well, maxed out at West Lawn, we're going to be maxed at West Lawn. There, there are some other cemeteries, but West Lawn, I believe, is, only has double plots left, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, there's, it is very few, there's very few plots left.
That are left, yeah. So it is, it is very important with respect to that, but I guess, um,
And my understanding is that, like Shirley Hill is also limited, and Hillside is also limited, you know? So the other cemeteries are nearing capacity as well, so it's
Look at the age of Hillside.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's
So, uh, the, the next one, you know, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm probably here as a, it's important, you know, it's, it's, whether it be the entire forty or part of it, I'm, I'm, I'm personally going to be a B for this one, but, um, I don't know, everybody else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably there as well. I'm on here the rest of, rest of the discussion. We'll probably shift some of these back and forth as we go forward.
I'm just going to put it here for now, and, okay. Next was, uh, Rails to Trails. This has to do with the slope stabilization. This is a tough one, because it's something that could wait, but if it waits and we have a problem, then we're going to have a half a million dollar problem.
Can I, can I just say something with that regard? Understanding that, um, that's one reason, um, that we have fund balance, to deal with emergencies like that. If it did become an emergency, though, that's a possibility, as long as we wind up with fund balance.
Are you, okay, are you saying that if something, if maybe we don't plug it in, but if it's an emergency, then we would use fund balance?
Well, eh, what I'm saying is, let's say, for example, that thing broke right now.
Yeah, then we would, then we would potentially use fund balance. We would have to go before, we don't have to
Budget committee?
Budget committee.
DRA.
And the DRA, yeah.
I mean, we have the ability to deal with the emergency, is what I'm saying, but what we don't want to do is, you know, make it a regular thing, that we're going to put something off and say, well, you know, if, you know
I completely get it, but as we go through this, I think we're going to see that there's a lot of things that
I, 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 all I'm saying is, as we go through this, I'm just pointing out ways that we could deal with it for the moment.
Okay, yeah.
Just, if I could just kind of stress this one, um, right now, it's, it's a problem that we all recognize. If we had a really heavy rainstorm, this could become a very big problem. If we don't address that, you know, you mentioned the slope failure, but keep in mind, it's also a, it's a granite box culvert that passes under that town rail bed. If that box culvert was to fail to the point where it can no longer take water, we would have a very large problem. That would be very expensive to fix, and we would have no time to deal with it. So it's, you know, the slope failure is one thing
Right.
That I think we have the luxury of time. The culvert part is a pine bomb waiting to go off, and, you know, right now, it's an expensive project. But if that thing caves in to where that stream can no longer flow through it, then it becomes an, oh my god, project.
How much cover is over that?
About sixty feet. Yes.
So it becomes a sixty-foot earth dam, is what you're telling us, Carl?
Yes, with no other way for the water to get out.
So what's the fund balance?
Close to, or just under five million, four point nine.
Yeah.
Uh, to me, that's an A.
Anyone else?
I'll go with an A on that one. Because you're taking a smaller D.
Yeah, I'm, I'm B, but I'll just put it, just put it here.
We've got to deal with that.
On the historic side of that culvert, any, any monies?
I, I would guess no.
Got to ask. If you don't ask, don't know.
Those bud- those budgets have been cut back by
I would suggest renaming this.
Yeah, I would too. This is not a rail trail.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the rail.
That's where, and every time it came up, that's what I tried to, to stress. I tried to stress it in the planning board.
Granite box culvert repair.
Hat rail trail.
Yep.
Yeah, it makes it looks like it's, oh, we have to, you know, a little path that we're dealing with. No, it's a, it's a bigger problem than that. Now, this is, obviously, reclamation has always been a, a, a bigger issue. And this is one where we have historically taken money from reclamation to deal with our increases in our budget. Last year, we put it on the warrant, a million dollars, and it failed. So we only have five hundred thousand dollars in, in, uh, reclamation. And if we were adhering to the road program from its inception, uh, the progress there, we would have been at like two point six million. So just from my personal, my opinion on this is, I don't, I don't think our road program could even be even marginally successful if we're under one point five. And I know some of you disagree with that, you think the number could maybe be a million. But five hundred thousand, I think we could probably all agree, five hundred thousand is woefully inadequate. We've been lucky in the sense that our DPW crews have been, have been able to do a lot of the prep work for the roads. So we've been able to stretch those dollars, but by the same token, then maintenance that ordinarily shouldn't, could be done, gets, also gets deferred, because they're busy doing drainage ditches and prepping for pavement. So, um, it is a good, it's a good thing, but as you know, Carl, it's, it's, we are robbing Peter to pay Paul on some of the stuff. So, um, I guess this one here is, is yet another discussion of, this is the largest, probably one of the largest ticket items that we're going to have. Is this something that we feel comfortable including in our budget for CIP? Or do we think, once again, because it's such a large dollar number, we need to put it out to the voters? Again, with that, what we had last year, if you vote on it, it goes into the default budget for the following year. Because I, I think that is a, that, even if you, even if you did a million dollars, it'd be a five hundred thousand dollar increase. If you did up to one point five, you're looking at a million, like we did last year. And putting that in the budget would have a, have a significant impact to our, to our budget. When you look at last year's budget to, um, this year's budget. So I'm just curious as to what everybody thinks about that one from a, would it be strategically, or how you, how you, how we, how we handle that one?
Well, to me, it's an A priority. The question is to what level?
Okay.
I mean, we have to deal with our roads. We can't continue to defer
I'm A on this one, too.
Maintenance and upgrades on those.
See, I, I, I look at this in a, in a different light. I said if you prioritize.
Yeah.
Okay, you have A, B, and C. Okay, well, what's the, what is the criteria to be an A? Okay, me, the criteria to be an A is, without it, we're all dead in the water, okay? The, you asked about the, uh, the box culvert. I understand The, you asked about the, uh, the box culvert, I understand the box culvert, but the box culvert to me does not come to the same level of the priority as the financial software, it's just behind it. This one also, okay, what I'm looking at is if we go through this and everything is an A, we wind up in the same position that we were when we started.
I, I, I don't, I, I've kinda mentally kinda, I don't have everything as an A, I honestly don't, but, um, this one, in my opinion, um, the mo, constituents care the most about a lot of things, but they care a lot about their roads. Um, and they've, they care a lot about being safe and getting, you know, all those other things in parks, but they care about their roads.
I don't disagree with you, but for the, for the, for the exercise that we're going through. To me, in order to qualify as an A, it has to meet a certain criteria, and to me, the only thing that's met the criteria so far is the financial software, I haven't found any of those items that come exactly to that level, they're just behind it, but they're not at that level, so that's why I put those others as a B. I'm just saying, A, B, or C, what level does it come up to?
And I guess I'll offer you my, my assessment, my assessment is something that is an A either needs to be in our budget, or it needs to be on a, on a warrant, article, that it's not gonna get deferred. And for me, that's, that can't get deferred.
Oh, okay, I understand, I understand how you're coming up with your A, okay, but my classification or my qualification for the prioritization was not at this point of what goes on to budget, but at this point to qualify or quantify the items and to put them in an order of where they are in priority regardless of the budget, and once we get them into that priority, then we take those items and we figure out what's gonna go into the budget.
Okay.
That's where I was coming from.
Well, can we come back, and once we have A, B, and C, then you can prioritize within A, B, and C?
Yeah, for, and at that point, you're prioritizing for the budget, I'm prioritizing for the, the, the importance to the community.
Right, and I'm good with that, I just, where are we at now with, I mean, I'm, I'm, roads, I'm, I'm here, I'm A to B, that's where I'm at, so you, you're more at B?
Well, I'm just doing it as, as either it's, we absolutely have to have it.
Well, just, it's a, okay, that's absolutely have to have it, that's something that we should do.
And we need, but.
And that's something that we could potentially defer.
It doesn't quite come to the level of absolutely have to have.
So, I think Phil, you're here, right?
And, and for me, there's nothing between the B and the A, it's either an A, B, or a C.
Okay, so you're a B, Carlos, your road program?
A.
A.
B.
Where are you?
B.
You're a B, and I'm an A, so we're in the middle, is that fair to say, we're between A and B on that one?
Well, I don't know how it can be between the middle if we have, if you're an A.
Okay, just play along, all right? Now, do we wanna talk about levels? Are we at, are we saying that, what's our baseline here, is that, is one point five a baseline, is it one million dollars, I mean, what are we looking at? I'm trying to push, you know, push too much here, but, I mean, I know that we can't afford two point five million dollars right now, I know we can't, so I wouldn't go with that number.
You heard my comment last week, I'm sticking to the one million dollars, sorry.
Okay, you're at one million, I think, I'm sorry, it was you who had said that, yeah.
Yep, it was I.
Yep. Anyone else? I'm at one point five.
No, I'm at a one million at a, at a minimum.
You're at one million minimum.
At a minimum.
Well, I'm at one million minimum too, but.
But.
I think it should be one point five. Because I, I, I'm concerned about the, the investment that we have in, in our roads, I don't wanna see that kinda go in the, in the crapper, so.
I mean, for discussion purposes, I'd be at a one point five, because we have to go down through this and find, figure out what the bottom line is and what impact that has on the tax rate.
Right.
And, and again, with a reality check as to whether or not the voters are gonna find that number tolerable.
Well.
So we need to go through this, and then come back and, and start looking at it again.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to get us to a point where we're here, and we kinda get a little bit to, towards the middle, and the good thing is that we, we both, we, we're kind of agreeing that one, one, one is the, one million would be the minimum, and maybe we're going one point five, but we know that's the min, so we're, we're, that's pretty good, I think.
In the ballpark.
We have a drainage project, Wertherly Hill. Now, this one, I'll be candid with you, I don't know a whole lot about it, um, I've heard the presentations, but then again, it seemed like this one took on a more of a life of its own in this particular C I P process.
Well, let's back up to Mast Road Drainage, what is that?
Oh, I apologize, Carlos.
Punchless stuff, Carl, is that just on the Mast Road Drainage, that ninety eight thousand, is that just?
Uh, that is the bond payment for the South Mast.
Yeah, so this is, we're on this no matter what, cause this is what we.
Yeah, yes, nothing to do about it.
Mast Road Drainage, the ninety eight thousand, it shouldn't be there.
Right.
That's a bond payment, that's included on the debt service, so you can take that out.
You sure it's included, that's where it's always shown?
Yes, it should not be there, I thought that was a project you had, a new project.
Nope.
I assumed it was punchless, follow up.
No, that ninety eight thousand is included in your, um, debt service.
There you go.
Carl, you did a wonderful job.
They're up to one point six now.
This is the Arrow, South Mast Drainage Project.
Yep.
Yep, that's debt service.
We just had to double check to make sure, and I, I agree that's where it should be done.
I know it is, I know it's in debt service.
Okay.
I thought this was other items.
The Wertherly Drainage.
Money for the financial software.
Wertherly Drainage Project, and I, I mean, am I speaking out, I, did that really just come hot and heavy this year?
No.
No, it's been there for a while.
It's been deferred for like four years.
But it seemed like we got a lot more discussion.
Yeah, when we got a propane truck fall through it.
Yeah, yeah, it became, I mean, it, it continues to be, and we also had those residents at the bottom of Wertherly Hill complaining to the board.
Yeah.
And there's no way to solve that problem without it.
Aren't we waiting for some money though from?
From the offsite improvement on Vikings Orchard or something?
No, yeah, up to top.
Project going up Wertherly Hill.
Viking, Viking.
No, their, their offsite improvement is they're actually doing work.
Right.
They're doing, um.
They did offsite though.
Going from Tyler up, the top part of it.
Done the intersection.
Right.
Right.
Is it, is it, okay, would it be fair to say that this particular drainage project is less important than the culvert problem we have at, you know, that head, head wall culvert problem? In terms of what?
Depends who you talk to.
Not if you ask.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a chance of something collapsing, creating an impoundment of water like you've ever seen, like a sixty feet tall, that would?
No, not to that degree, but there's, the pipe coming down Wertherly Hill is failed to the point where in a heavy rain, the water is surging out of the structures, washing out private property.
Okay.
It's actually percolating through your pavement.
Yeah, it blows right out of the pavement, so it's just a matter of time before we get a heavy enough storm that it takes Wertherly Hill away.
Sue you off, but you have around a merrill.
No, did you ever see Mike Hill House's video of it? He had a great video that he took during a storm, and it was all percolating up through the pavement during that storm.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, um, many years ago, when I first got on the board, I know we did the Rosemont Drainage, and it was bad for several homeowners, but we spent, I think, six hundred thousand dollars fixing that problem, and I'm, and I think this is something that's similar, but when I'm looking at all these issues that we have here, you know, for me, this one is like probably a C right now, I mean, I think it, I think for me, I just think we have so much that we have to deal with, that I, I just couldn't, in good conscience, make that an A or a B, but that's just me, so where's everybody else see this one?
I see it as a C.
I kinda go, I, I think this, it, it, depending on the situation, the time, and the place, this could have as much of an impact as the culvert on the drain, I'll go the B.
Okay, you're a B?
Yeah, I'll be at a B with that as well.
Okay, so.
I think the, the long-term implications are great.
Okay, we're gonna go, is it, I just wanna make sure we're all, I'm gonna put it in between B and C, that's. How do I spell this wrong?
Carl, is there another option, a less expensive option, just to deal with people at the bottom of the hills issue than doing the whole road?
Yeah, you could do a, just a section of it.
For how much?
However much you.
Fifty thousand.
You wanted, I mean, you just.
We'll come back to that.
Yeah.
Um, Village Road Improvements, this had to deal, do partly with, was this offset with, with, with offsite improvement money and, or no?
Way back when, it was part of a, a grant money.
Right.
And it was in the ten-year road plan, however, it is in year twenty thirty-two, I think, in the ten-year plan, so.
Where's everybody on this one?
We're not gonna see any money for it.
And this was for what?
This, this is the design, are we, are we talking about the intersections, the six hundred?
Yeah, I see.
Okay, the intersections are a C M A C grant, that, that is.
That's a C.
Forty-five, fifty-five, C M A C grant.
I'm a C.
C.
Okay.
This is the, how much is the C M A C grant?
It's, we would be getting, uh, I think we get fifty-five percent grant money, and it's to do Pleasant Street and High Street.
So we'd have to take away the revenue that's in the revenue section.
Right.
All right, Carl, still with you here, Detention Pond Reconstruction. What in your book?
No, no.
You got a good memory, man, you got no, you have no notes?
None, the, the detention ponds, you know, and again, can this be deferred, it's been deferred for thirty years, we have about sixty or seventy of them, we gotta start dealing with, you know, it affects backyard flooding, it affects our stormwater program, so it's, it's one of those things, this would be the first year we're trying to get our hands around that, that inventory list. You know, it's not like there's some.
Yeah, this really is gonna be a recurring annual.
This is gonna be a recurring thing, yeah.
You have an operating budget somewhere.
Right.
It's gonna be a special crew for drainage, crew with a little, a pickup truck and a trailer and a little equipment on there, and it's gonna be.
Bar Ricks.
A crew of three.
Where's everybody on this one?
C.
C.
I'm C.
C, C.
Oh, Carlos for you?
Yep.
Okay, Tennis Court.
C.
I'm a C, sorry. Yeah.
He's been quiet over there.
And I know how bad they are, I guess, but.
They're in bad shape.
Yeah, they're, they are, I mean.
I mean, actually, look, when you look at finance, compared to financial software, roads.
You're right.
Where does it come in?
Okay, is everybody, is everybody okay with that, or?
Unless you can justify moving it up to something else.
Unless you can get Serena Williams to play in these courts, okay?
Oh, that might bring some money.
Yeah, that might bring some money in, but.
Might bring some money in, have a fun with it.
And you know, for those who play, I mean, obviously for those who play, I mean, these are, they, they are in very rough shape, I mean, in some cases, the one at, at Roy Park, it's not even playable, I don't think, it's too dangerous almost, you might have to shut that down.
Two of them, yeah, you're, you're close to putting a yellow caution tape around.
Yep.
Yeah, those two, but at, at Barnard Park, they're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, yes, Barnard's not, this is more like Roy, I mean, I don't think you could, yeah, so now we only have one place to play tennis.
Right, you may have to drive over to Barnard Park to go for a year or two until we can get it in there.
Uncle Nick Dam, we don't have anything there, uh, next was Park Improvements, and you've already taken off the table?
Which, um, yes.
Pavilion.
The Pavilion is off.
So that would be a D, Park Improvements, right?
Yep.
There's no, there's not even a column for D, so it's off the chart.
It's, uh, it's, uh, it's out in the parking lot over there.
Hey, Scott?
Yeah.
You can write it on the wall to the right of the.
Yeah, I'm sure that, uh, Dana will be very happy.
Just move, just move the board over, nobody will see it.
All right, next, we're looking at, um. Hold on, we're gonna skip by Matt, let's go to the third page and that, which is the buildings. Go to the vehicles last. So Grassmere Town Hall.
C.
I have it as a D, but it's like.
I only have A, B, and C.
Okay.
C.
Carlos?
C.
Okay. Library Project, need a refresher on that one.
Yeah, what was that?
Is that the work on the chimney, or the?
Chimney's done, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's done.
Chimney's done, this was.
The what?
I thought it might have been for the chimney. That was, it's been repaired, the chimney's been repaired, soon as looking up.
I think it was done, because they, they did that.
Yeah, they completed that a few weeks ago, I believe.
Hold on.
Repair and painting of library exterior.
Oh, yes, the, the, the covings, the eaves, the, the wood, the wood trim around the.
That's a C.
Yep, that's a C.
C.
Well, is it cosmetic, or is part of it like rot, was something like rosative?
It's still a C, it doesn't, I'm just telling you, to me, it's a C, you're either A, B, or C.
Okay.
Could be the parking lot.
Yeah, I'm just gonna stick with more of the, uh, next one was, uh, page four, we have the finance offer, which is already up there, next was the transfer station generator.
A.
Are you really serious, you're an A?
It's part of our infrastructure, how are we gonna get fuel, how are we gonna survive, how are we gonna do things?
There are lightning rod over there.
Yeah, they, they track it.
They do.
Can always go to manual hand pumps, it's a C.
Tanks are elevated, just get it valve and it'll shut off.
Hey, there's, there's many ways to skin it, get the fuel out of that.
Yeah.
Public Works has, has portable generators if we have to do it.
Any, um.
I'm just trying to be realistic to be A, B, or C.
Any grants for this?
There is a grant, we're applying for the grant.
Okay, I'm a C, so you're an A, we're probably.
We're all over the board.
No, I think we're, I'm gonna put it like, trying to just do it so that it, when we go through this.
Okay.
Actually, pretty good grant, no, fifty, fifty.
Yeah, I think it's fifty.
How much is it?
Can do a soft match with it.
I thought it was like eighty percent grants.
No, no, that's only.
It'd be another E M P G grant, and it's a, it's a fifty, fifty.
Fifty, fifty, okay.
But it's a.
You can do a soft match.
Soft match and any kind of match, if you were to, say, prepare the pad for it.
Yeah.
Dig the trenches.
Yep.
Hey, Scott, I'm a B on that.
You're a B.
Yeah, I'm a B on that.
The reason why it was still a C is because we haven't had one in, ever, right? And we've, we've had different events and we've somehow managed. And we've, we've had different events and we've somehow managed, so-
When we've had those events, I mean, we've had the Mickey Mouse generators, right, Chief?
Right, but I, I'd also say that we have-
Yeah, we have a way of-
No, I'm just saying, we have Mountain View Middle School, or others that are, that are shelters with, with really no, that, that, you know, generators that powers up the building. We have, it generates enough power for the, um, cafe and the hilltop, but it's not, we have other buildings that don't have, you know, generators. So, fire stations, everything has generators. Police does.
Police and fire.
Fire.
Is there a transfer switch on that fuel pump?
Uh, there's not now.
There's no transfer switch?
No, it's scary.
If it is done manually, it's not ideal.
No, what I meant was if you put a generator up there, is there a transfer switch, a portable generator, is brought down there, is it?
And again, I guess, you know, my whole thing is that, and, and I know, you know, certainly for, you know, our first responders, I know DPW is part of our first responders, but typically if something were to wet the bed, you know, we have the, we have the ability, I would hope with PSNH, that we're gonna get a first priority on some, on important infrastructure.
Yeah, we know it's counting on that, though.
What?
I wouldn't always count on that, though.
It takes, it takes time, depending on the magnitude of the emergency.
I would argue that the last time, the last storm we had, um, we went almost, what, five or six days before we got power restored to Lauren Lane, which is our primary shelter area.
Okay, but we, but DPW didn't have power in a lot of these places, right?
Yeah, several days.
I don't believe so. Right, several days, and, and we, we made do, right? How did we make do?
I can't, I can't, I can't emphasize how not ideal it is to have a portable generator unit next to a fueling, fueling station.
Yeah, it's definitely not ideal.
Yeah, you do not, uh, it, it does not pass the, the code test, but it, but it being in an emergency situation, we just let it happen.
All right. My other question was, what were the costs of those, you know, trailer mount units?
What do you mean?
We talked about that at one point, and I think-
Portable generators, if they travel around on wheels.
No, no, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you had something, you had, you had a trailer mount unit, and you had the transfer switches at different buildings, if you had a power failure at DPW, it could be stored at DPW, used predominantly there, but then it would be trail it over to another building.
There's one problem with that. In an emergency situation, you may not be able to get that trailer from point A to point B, because the roads could be out, they could be blocked by trees, li- power lines could be down, so that's, that's not something to depend on for an emergency situation.
We, we belabor this one probably, so. Um, next one was Pleasant Street Bridge reconstruction. This one has been, I think, on CIP for a while, um, but this is more, has to do with the, uh-
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, right?
Right, it's the, it's the sidewalk bridge crossings. This would be largely dependent on what you do with the road plan, because Pleasant Street's a very expensive project.
Right.
And if we're not gonna do Pleasant Street next year, then we really don't have to deal with the bridge.
Yeah.
No, I have one question on that project, though. Does that meet any of the guidelines for historic structures like the Main Street Bridge? Okay, I'm just asking.
No, I don't think so, these, I don't know how old these sidewalks are, but I don't think there's-
I'm gonna make sure that we were gonna, we were not gonna have to go through that level of detail.
That's a C.
I'm a C there, but-
C.
Uh, playground expansion, forty thousand. How are we at that?
Luxury, C, or D?
Sure, C. Collis?
C.
Just an editorial comment, I, I think the, the ability, you know, when we set up that capital fund, was for this very reason, I think. Because it, it will always be a C, Rick, you know, but this gives you the ability-
And that's, and if you notice what they're doing this year, they're actually starting-
And they are, right.
Because you, you didn't have anything before, takes a little while to build something, so now you're starting.
Yeah, so, uh, Barnard Track was the next one. Now that, are we doing anything this year?
Uh, that, that'll be done in the spring.
But is money being encumbered, or no?
It's gonna be directly out of the revolving fund.
So this comes-
This comes out.
Right out.
Comes out.
Thirty-one thousand comes out.
Oh, okay. And then the next one is the police IMC software, and is there any ability in this one for a grant, Chief?
We've looked, uh-
Not really.
Not really. Most of it's got to do with the data conversion from what our pri- our current system has to change the thing over. That's, that's-
All right.
Probably a third of the cost.
So, this is a good one, I think, that we should have some discussion on, because for the, for Collis and, um, Mark, we had a contract with New Boston and Ware.
New Boston and Ware.
And one of the problems was, is that-
They jump ship.
We, we have one, uh, Q-
Q E D.
Q E D, okay, I'm just, I got a lot of initials, okay.
No, that's fine.
Q E D, and we went that route when, when software came out, and a lot of other people went to this IMC. That became more of the-
Standard.
Red.
Right. More the standard, I guess, and there's more functionality with, with IMC in terms of exchange of data. It helps with the officers in the field where they can do a lot of their work in the field.
Reduces the paperwork handling. Um, if I have a dispatcher that inputs data, you don't have the officer re-imputing that data, and you don't have the records clerk re-imputing that data.
Once it's in, it's in.
It's one, it's in, it's in, and it just downfills from our back goes.
Some offsetting savings.
There's some offsetting savings in times and labor and things of that sort, so.
But is there enough offsetting, I mean, is it like a thing where if you lost somebody in records or in dis- is there something where we could say, hey, we think we're gonna get enough productivity gain in both our officers and in our record storage, where we'd be able to reduce hours to that, over a seven-year period of time, this software pays for itself?
I don't think you're going to see a reduction in the need for personnel. What I see is a reduction in the work required of current personnel, so that in the future, we won't have to increase the personnel.
Okay.
In addition, although we'll never be able to recoup our expenditures in the communications line, we can bring in offsetting revenues from other agencies. And again, there's no promises on that, but I would initially go after New Boston, I'd go after Ware and other departments throughout the state.
Well, here's my question, Chief, is that... I know, I know you can't get an agreement with these folks, you know, beforehand, they, they may not, but if, if there was something, like for me, I, I think I could have a good conversation with the Budget Committee or the public to say, okay, we think it's worthwhile to spend a hundred and sixty-nine thousand on this software, because we have letters of commitment from four different areas who are, and, and the revenue from that is X, you know, forty thousand dollars of dispatch fees, so in, in, you know, in a certain number of years, we, we're gonna pay for it, for itself. And, and then I can point back to the fact that we lost, we've lost twenty-something thousand dollars of revenue every year or more.
Next year's closer to fifty.
Okay, um, simply because they went elsewhere. So, that's just a whole return on investment thing.
And unfortunate to get that letter of commitment.
I know, it takes, yeah, yeah.
You've gotta then have them go through their boards, those agencies, and without us having the product available, they're gonna say, well, we'll wait and see. And we've had those discussions from other agencies, and they said, when you get it, come see us.
I, I, I think, though, one of the ways to look at this is that, that IMC, uh, that software makes us a viable, a viable competitor in that field, in that arena.
Well, I'm with you on this one, I mean, it's, we, and I know this is like a red herring, you know, the whole thing with dispatch, and we talked about Hillsborough County, but if we're gonna make this thing viable, and we're going to be a more of a regional center for it, then we need this. So, I mean, I have this as a B. I don't think it's an A.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's a B.
But I got it as a B. Where, where you?
I agree, I'm a B.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't affect our ability to provide emergency services, just do it more efficiently.
Correct. And it, and it does help us revenue generate.
Although by doing it more efficiently, we would be able to respond to more emergencies in a more timely manner, because now we've got, so it's really, it's really split.
Right, it brings up our, raises our level of, of response, of being able to-
Well, right, and, and that's, and that's another key point, is that, you know, the chief has said it, and others, the software, because of the download of information, not having to do all this paperwork, it also helps the officers as well. And that's why, my recollection was, that's why, you know, New Boston and others left us, because they have so few officers. They're in the same budget crunch, too, that they, they want their officers to be in the field as opposed to pushing paperwork, and that's why they did.
And we do that as well.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, while we're in the field, we're re-typing the information over and over again versus taking either enforcement or response to the calls for service.
Right.
To me, that's an A. I'm gonna put that in as an A, along with the financial software. I think it's, they're kind of on par with one another, and I think there's some opportunities there, so.
So, Collis, you're an A, you're-
I'm a B.
I'm a B, I'm a B. Mark?
I'll be a B.
Okay, so I'm gonna put her right around here, IMC. All right. And we'll do that. That service we can't do anything about? We're gonna go to vehicle.
Now, can I make the suggestion?
Yeah.
Once we go through this exercise, what we have is A, we take off the board, and we take those items, and we go through this exercise again with those items there.
What are you, I'm sorry?
We, we go through this exercise, and we take the A item, okay, off the board, because that's an A item.
Okay.
Okay, and we go through the remaining items, the same exercise, and reprioritize those, and pick the highest priorities of what's left. See, that's where I was going with-
I clearly get what you're doing.
What I was going through was, what we're, what we're doing here is, is two-part at once. I was trying to get to just the prioritization, and then deal with the budget, political, and all of that stuff.
I think this, though, I think visually, kinda-
You, you get to the same way, but-
We get to the same way. Get the same spot. We have, first one is our police vehicles, looks like we're only doing two.
Correct, and we did two last year as well.
Right.
But these items are in the budget, Scott.
Hmm?
The cruisers are in the budget.
I'm just-
Well, I was saying here-
I gotta go before the Budget Committee. They're gonna be talking about all this stuff, so I can say, hey, my board believes this is an A priority. This is not a B or a C. I, I, I need to kinda go through-
No, those are not CIP, those are in the budget.
Then why are they here?
They're technically, they're CIP items because they are over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh.
All vehicles, no matter what the cost, are supposed to be in there.
Right.
Right, but they become, because they're recurring, they become in the budget, and that's where they belong.
When you, well, all CIP is in the budget.
Right, exactly. Nothing is-
Really, I mean, we put all the CIP items once the decisions are made.
One year, one year on them, just to give us a quick-
We typically replace them at around ninety to a hundred thousand miles.
And these two are, will be up there by the time.
And, uh-
Maintenance on them, is the maintenance been a, quite a, I'm sorry, Chief, for the question.
No, it, it depends on the vehicle. I mean, we've run some that are at a hundred and twenty thousand miles that, they're there, but I wouldn't run them as a first-line response vehicle. Um, and then we've got others at sixty thousand, then-
So you're looking for two.
Two.
Right.
On cruisers.
You're gonna give them an A.
Phil?
Because it affects their job performance.
Where are you?
Well, I'm an A, but, see, to me, I would draw a line underneath there, because I don't see the cruisers and vehicles in that exercise.
You see it as an ongoing expense.
That's okay.
Right, so that's why I say, I would draw a line underneath what you have up there, and then read you-
I'll put a line and asterisk wherever you want. I'll highlight it.
Whatever you want. I mean, as far as vehicles, there's an A. It's, it's an A.
You're an A, you're an A, I'm, I'm an A, so, um-
Well, move it down. It's not in the same category as the financial software.
We've got a different color, we've got a different color, so.
Yeah, that's why I, okay. They're all right, Scott. I don't care what Dave says about you.
Tractor truck.
What is that?
That is, uh, for, uh, rep use and recycling, we have to transport, transport.
Yeah, it's the, it's the tractor, the long-haul tractor.
Is that the one that's almost got a million miles on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the one that hauls up to Maine and down to Mass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's the, what we would do is the current frontline truck, which I haven't checked recently, but probably has about three hundred thousand miles, would go to a backup, and then the one that has about seven or eight hundred thousand would go away.
It's an A to me. Yep, likewise, A.
A?
Okay, I'm a, I'm a B, and, but we'll put it in here, um... Okay, next is Chevy pickup truck.
That's my command post.
Command post, which gets cut every single sold area.
Correct.
So not, so-
So nineteen eighty-nine, um, we are currently looking at a grant. It came in last Wednesday for Homeland Security money, a fifty, fifty grant, um...
Where's everybody on this one?
I'm a B.
A. Again, it affects job performance when it's out in the field, and if it's needed. I've seen it work, and trust me, it's-
We had, we recently had the debate, um, at the college, um, we had to shut down the heater, because of the leak of the propane, so I have people inside with no heat.
Where were you again?
I'm a B.
You're a B, Mark's an A, I'm a D.
I'm gonna go with an A.
Okay, next was the forestry truck, that's the, that one we're trying to get a grant for as well. But we haven't been very successful over the last few years trying to get it.
We have another grant application out there again, um, that's a nineteen sixty, sixty-eight Jeep. We, this year was very difficult for it. We were, we had a busy, we had a dry summer, and it was a busy year for brush fires. And unfortunately, it, it, uh, once we got it out there, it's-
We won't go there, Chief.
Yeah, okay. It, it failed to perform, put it that way.
When would you hear about the grant?
Probably, they say, before the end of the year. And where or another.
When this happens, I mean, what does mutual aid look like on a forestry vehicle?
It takes time.
Yeah.
It, it takes time, and, um, it's one of those things where, um, your, your next unit could come from New Boston, Bedford.
So they all have, they all have them?
Hoax it, done by them.
They all have vehicles of different varying capabilities, um, and you got, when you're out there, and depending on which area of town you're in, you've got a call for the right resources for the right fire. And, uh, it's, it's, it's a challenge, and not having, not having a vehicle that's reliable is a- And this is in remote areas. Once it gets close to populated areas, now we can bring in our traditional equipment. Correct, and, and- From there, protect structures and- In our goal with this, this particular vehicle is to make a, not just a forestry vehicle, but an all-season vehicle. So if we have the weather events, uh, we can get a quick attack vehicle, uh, that has full-wheel drive and respond quickly up these back, up these driveways that are covered with snow or ice or whatever. And then secondly, and then thirdly, rather, was the, uh, to make sure, uh, we, we don't have to drag out the big engines for every call. If it's a, if it's a investigation or to assist a medical crew, we're not taking a six hundred thousand dollar engine to, to a medical emergency when we could take a vehicle like this.
What does everybody have for this one?
I got a B.
B. Mark?
B.
I'm B. All right. Next is the loader. That's you, Carl.
Yep.
Gotta have it, right?
You know, it's, it's one of those things, it's, it's, we have two of them. Uh, this is the oldest one, which, um, I believe is like a nineteen ninety-two or nineteen ninety-seven. It's quite, it's quite old, um-
It spends in bushings, too, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we were gonna keep it for any length of time, there, there probably is a maintenance cost.
Can we, I mean, I'm just curious, I, I know I ask these questions all the time, but I mean, this is what residents ask me, or, you know, can we, can we get something used on the, some of these equipment, like, like a loader? I mean, there's, aren't there like places that, whether it be surplus, go out of business, you can't-
I wouldn't touch a used loader. I mean, and you can say what you want, Carl, but I mean-
Well, the, the problem with used is, I would love to be able, because occasionally, I remember, uh, you know, somewhere out in CIP, we have a road grader. It's a very expensive piece of equipment that, quite frankly, I can't justify buying new. They had one come up at surplus that had three hundred and seventy-five hours on it, but you had to have twenty-five thousand dollars to buy it. We didn't have twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget anywhere to buy it, so we had to make a pass. And the problem was, we used to have a little surplus contingency line, so if something like that happened, we could, we could justify it. There's no way to do it, you know, a used, a used loader, if you plan on a used loader, and we budget for a used loader, then next year, when the budget gets approved, you hope you'll find a used loader. It's not usually the way it works.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, but you raise a good point, though, is that if we think we can limp along with our current situation, and we, and we put aside fifty thousand dollars for not just a loader, but just in a contingency for buying a surplus vehicle, I think that's another thing, where we can convince the Budget Committee and the voters to say, yeah, we're putting, we wanna put this fifty thousand dollars aside this year, so that if there is something surplus, whether it be a loader, or, you know, a grader, or whatever, that we have the money to, to buy it, and it's gonna save us a lot, you know, without buying it new, which could be triple the cost.
Because, you know, the same thing would happen if, say, a nearby contractor went out of business.
That's what I'm talking about, right.
And they had a bunch of good stuff. That's not gonna, they're not gonna keep it around until next April when we're available to buy it.
Yeah, you need a-
I mean, my, I'm just gonna throw this out, I mean, you know, for me, I would make this a fifty thousand dollar item, or seventy-five thousand, and put it as a contingency to buy a surplus something, which we, unknown at this point, but if you look at CIP, these things are, they're programmed out the next year, the year after that, there's, there's gonna, there are needs in, you know, for a DPW, and if we can pick up something for a third of the cost rather than buying it new.
Question for Carl, if we, excuse me, if we buy something used, what type of warranty, what type of guarantees? I mean, that's a wide, that's a-
As is that scene.
Higher beware.
And, and you know, the, with heavy equipment, it, it's one of those things that, you know, this loader's been a great loader since nineteen ninety-seven. I mean, we've had the thing for whatever that is, do the math, you know, fifteen years. Could last fifteen more. The problem with a loader is, when something big happens, it's big.
Yeah.
You know, the transmission goes-
How much did it cost to rent one for the year?
You know-
No, I'm saying, we rent excavators during the summer, so-
Well, and, and that is always an option, a, a purchase to own, or a, a rent to per, to own, like we did with the excavator. But, you know, back when we did that, it was, the excavator was like thirty thousand a year that we were paying.
No, I guess what I'm saying, if it were to just totally break down, and we were gonna buy it, and we had to rent one.
Yeah.
And then we could then, and we would just say, listen, we, it's done, I mean, it's toast, it doesn't work anymore. We've been renting one, and now we have, now we have to buy one. I mean, I'm, this, for me, is a B or a C, but-
Well, we should have something in a contingency fund, so we can take advantage of those situations when they present themselves.
It's almost like you want a capital reserve fund for equipment, and with a selectman named his agent, so if any of these buys come out, or to use the leverage, if you got a grant towards something, you know, you could have a capital reserve fund for vehicles and equipment.
Go B with the seventy-five thousand dollar contingency fund or something?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, I think that's, and I think we can sell that to the voters, it's a smart way to go about this.
Yeah, I, I've always kinda felt that that was a good idea. Yeah, I, I've always kinda felt that that was a good idea, um.
I would see that as something ongoing, too, that you'd be contributing to annually to put in there.
Okay. I'm gonna make that up, so that'll be reclassified, I guess, from, from loader to that?
Equipment, yeah, equipment contingency.
That's fair enough. Uh, okay, help me, PD hindsight loop, hold on.
Hindsight recorder.
Yeah.
That's when you call in for an emergency, and it records phone calls.
Right. Oh, records, the nine-one-one calls.
Radio transmissions, it's an officer safety issue.
Right.
It's an industry standard, and it's just gone, it's just the only part for the one we currently have in.
It does, what, the way we've been going, the way I explained it to me, that's a B.
That's a B?
Yeah, it's a B.
Okay. I think that's an A, but I think it presents a huge liability.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just saying, to me, it doesn't come up to the level of financial software.
Something for this, could we go to the four point nine million dollars, our, um, the, the fund?
Fund balance?
Fund balance?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, for me, Mark, I mean, spending twenty-three thousand, to put it as a, you'd, you'd almost have to make it a special article, it's too small, I, I, I just, I don't know.
Okay, no, I'll go, okay, then, gonna be an A for me.
It's an A for me.
It's an A for me, it's a small number. Let's see what it looks like when we shake it out again.
You know, keep in mind, though, you know, I know, we, with this whole accreditation thing, which is very important, but something like this, in my opinion, protects us liability-wise, when people wanna know, I mean, it protects our officers, for one, but I, I, I think it's, when people claim something was said, or wasn't said, and now you can go, say, go back to the recordings, I mean, to me, that's a very important.
We use it for prosecution and domestic violence and many different things, so.
Uh, truck with snow, I mean, is that sanding and plowing, one eighty-five, right, that's a typical.
That's, that's the ten-wheel.
Ten-wheel.
Few years ago, we replaced the body on the old ten-wheeler, this is the cabin chassis.
Now, why would it be?
We moved the old body over.
Why would it be one eighty-five?
Cause it, there's some money involved in transferring it over.
Gotta take the dump body off.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Just.
But I thought that was one eighty-five for, for, so, so what would it be if it, if we didn't have the body?
It, a ten-wheeler, I think, is like two hundred and thirty thousand, or thereabouts.
Oh, okay.
For the chassis?
Yeah, yeah, the, the body was almost fifty grand.
Okay.
Just for the body.
And don't forget the price.
Still have to replace the plow back.
And this is the one that price has gone up since we were looking at it.
This one, or no?
Yeah.
This is more the workhorse one?
Yeah, yeah, and it, and keep in mind, that all we replaced was the body, so the, the wing plow, the plow package, the controls, the computer eye spreaders, or the computer module, all that stuff is still the old truck, so. That's why it's still kinda costly.
Okay, where's everybody on this one?
I go with a B.
Yeah, B.
B.
You're a B?
Yeah.
B, B, I'm B.
Did say that I'm not sure it'll even pass inspection next year, right?
Next one, hold on, DPW equipment, ninety thousand.
That can go away. That's actually the grader, right? That, that can go away.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be there, we rehabbed it, we rehabbed it last year.
Next was a Ford dump truck, I'm assuming it's like a five fifty or something, like based upon the price.
Eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand?
It's a ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the F-five fifties, I think we have two of them in there.
You have, um, no, you have a three fifty, and a, I'm assuming it's a five fifty.
Yeah, the ninety thousand is the F-five fifty.
Yeah.
B.
Anyone else?
B, B, B.
On the, you're a B, B. F-five fifty, and then the F-three fifty, same thing, you're a B. Everybody else, same thing?
Yeah.
Um, absent on here is, I, was, you don't, wait, hold on, let me go to. We don't have anything for, for special articles, do we, Sue?
Yes.
On what tab, what?
Um, it's, it should be the same tab as CIP. After dead service.
Yeah, there we go, okay. Um. We've got three things. Main Street program. I mean, technically, it has a priority, if you see, but it's something that has been, not just. Where are we with that one?
A.
Small number. Good benefits, good benefits from that program.
I, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't go on here, because it, as far as I'm concerned, automatically goes on the warrants.
This one, this one isn't automatic, I don't think we. I'm not saying it's A, B, or C, it's, uh, it's not as important as some other things, in, I mean, in terms of priorities, but it does, it is important for the community to do awesome things.
Sure is.
It's gonna end up on the ballot anyway, so. Um, next is the fire station renovation bond, and this one.
There was a.
What?
There was a change on that one, that amount wasn't right in the first one.
First one says three point three five million, but it's, isn't it higher than that?
Yes, it's three point three eight five. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Um, now, if we were to, I don't have my handout, but if we were to bond it, we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars.
Say quarter, say quarter million.
Right, around that, so that would be the net.
Or, if, we also talked to, I also talked to the Department of Agriculture, and they have rural grants, for projects like this, that are currently about three percent, and there's no issuance, uh, fees whatsoever, and it could go out as far as thirty years.
Department of Agriculture?
For rural.
Grants or loans?
It's, oh, I'm sorry, it's a loan, I'm, I'm sorry.
Three percent loan.
Three percent loan, yep, up to thirty years, so, something that we should consider if we get there.
Yeah, we haven't had good luck with being considered rural.
Yeah, my, um.
By their definition on other items, remember, was it you and I that went out to talk to, um, somebody?
For the, uh.
I talked to the office, and they said that we would, it would be eligible, so, we'll talk to them.
For the, for the sake of time.
It'll be a fire different than sewer.
I'd like to come back to this one and go last on it, we can skip it, um, and.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Let's, the, the renovation one, is that, the reason why I wanna skip it for a second, is I think there's a lot of different ways, for one, this represents all three stations.
Yes.
Um, this, the, the plan called for a phasing, so you could technically take your worst station, and I believe it's one million dollars, and then bond that, and, you know, you know, there's a lot, or, this, so there's different things that you can do, um, but, so I just wanna come back to that, cause I think this'll be a little more discussion. The fire equipment capital reserve fund, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where's everybody on that one?
A.
You're an A, Mark?
Yep.
Anyone else?
B.
This is a capital reserve fund.
For fire apparatus.
As the needs arise.
Yes.
In a reserve, reserve fund, is there anything in a reserve fund now, or would this be established?
There's a little money left.
Four thousand dollars left.
Now.
So the fund's there, this is, this is money to replenish the fund, right?
But the key to this one is that it allows us to get a grant, because you need, you need matching funds. So, if, you know, we've been fairly, you know, the chief has been fairly good at getting some of these grants, but you need a little bit of matching money to say, hey, we have a fund, and then that gives us some points on our grant applications that we have, have that, so, I'm not saying that two hundred and fifty thousand will be the number, maybe that number changes, but, for me, I have, I have this as a B.
I have it as a B.
And where's everybody, you're running a A, will you, you're a B? Okay, and then let's go back to the, to the renovation. Chief, are there, is there, like, are the needs similar for three stations, or is one in the roughest shape and really needs ASAP work? That's one question, two, do, should we bond all three at the same time, and then phase the construction? I mean, I'm just trying to get your, your sense as to, as to this, because these are the dialogues that we're gonna have with, with the school board, because they're gonna come back to us, and they're gonna say, yeah, but, you know, Bartlett is, you know, and mechanically, there's problems with their systems, and this and that, and, you know, I think I wanna be able to articulate that.
Well, I mean, what was interesting is, is the Fire Station Improvement Committee, when we met, this was discussed at length, and we had some great, great dialogue when that occurred, and when we're talking about, you know, similar projects, like, say, the school, uh, we have the same, we have the same pro- problems, space, 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 and whether it's the apparatus space, we've got, uh, aging mechanicals in the buildings, uh, unsafe systems within the buildings, and just lack of, lack of usable space where we need it. So we did, the idea was, we may be able to get more bang for our buck if we were to, say, bond the three stations as one package, and, and then get ahold of a architect builder and say, this is, this is, this is how much we have, this is, this is your, this is your scope, and, um, can you get it done? And we thought that perhaps by going that route versus taking, taking one station at a time, fighting to get the funding each time, and then bidding out, getting a different builder perhaps next time, and then going to the next project. So without a doubt, we, we, we prioritize that the stations, if we were to have a timeline, and Station eighteen was the first one, uh, Station seventeen was the next, and then, then Station nineteen would, would be done. Again, addressing similarities of space, and dealing with how you fit our apparatus and, and the stations, and so on. Uh, the list was, was, was long and extensive. So, that's the sentiment from, from the committee's stand, standpoint, and I agree with them, and by, by separating it out, you, 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 you may not get that bang for your buck that, that you desire by taking three projects and, and spread them out, unless you, they said, put them in the budget.
So where do we, where, any input on this?
Well, the only way this is gonna move forward is with bonding, in my opinion.
Right.
It's the only way this is gonna happen, um, and I'd like to see some more specifics on the annual fiscal impacts with the various options. If this one moves forward first, and then this one falls in year two, I mean, I, I, I need to see some numbers, like, I hear what you're talking about, it makes sense that it ought to be phased, which one comes first, which one comes second? Do we do all of one first, can we do pieces of them, I mean, there's gotta be a lot of different ways to mix and match as we move forward through a three, five, ten-year development plan, upgrade these.
Yeah, and that was, that was, that was a, a week after, but the month after month discussion we had in the committee is, because each station had, um, different specific needs, it's not like we could sit there and go, okay, we're just gonna budget the apparatus bay guys to come in and do all the stations, and then we're gonna do the next, next portion of it the next year. Because eighteen had, had its own problems, seventeen's got, well, they've got a lot of problems too, and, and then, but they're different, and then nineteen's got that problems, and it's completely different from the other, from the other three, two, two stations, stations, rather. So, uh, I, it's, it was, it was discussed, like I said, it was discussed at length, and the committee said it was tough to pinpoint as far as a timeline and how you get these projects done either concurrently or one at a time, and a lot of them came to a consensus that perhaps if you're doing site work for, say, Station eighteen, they could be, they could jump from there and, and go to Station seventeen as a cost-effective method, you keeping that, that crew on, and you're keeping them focused in town. Things like that, but beyond that, we didn't discuss breaking it down to that point. What you were saying.
Okay, if I. I don't wanna go too far ahead without David here, but if we could get, um, that, like, on a piece of paper, which you probably already have, I guess, done, um, and then that'll be a, we can then do next week what you suggested, and that is, then taking the As out, cause those are the hot, but, but those are known.
Are we all done with that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what do we have for A?
We, we only have, um, look at Carl, interposter.
You have some proper way to do it.
Financial software, police cruisers, and the tractor truck. You have the command vehicle and the PD hindsight as close to As. And then you have mostly Bs, are the cemetery, the covert problem, uh, near the rail trail, our, our road, our roads, DPW generator, IMC software, forestry, a seventy-five thousand dollar DPW equipment capital reserve fund in lieu of the, um.
Right.
The loader, uh, ten-wheeler is a B, and then the, 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 and the trucks, and then the capital reserve fund for fire, whatever, right now it's at two fifty, but that's, uh, that is a discussion.
Right, so my suggestion is to take out the highest, highest, the one with the highest rank, take it right off the table, because that's a definite, and then re, then go through those again.
Right, I guess.
I'd like to see, take out, we've, we've crossed some out, we've eliminated some.
Yeah.
I think, take those out, I'd like to see the Cs taken out, there's ones that we've reduced, like the capital reserve we reduced, I'd make those adjustments, leave the bonding for the fire stations out, and see what that number looks like.
Yeah.
And see what, see what that, see what the impact on the tax rate would be.
So, for elimination, I had the Mass Road drainage, because it's already in dead service, so that's a minus ninety-eight thousand, three twenty-seven. Barnard tract was a deletion for next year, thirty-one thousand. What about park improvements, a thirty-five thousand for the.
Yes, the pavilion, yep, that's out.
That's out, too, I got that one out, so those are the, oh, and, uh, the equipment grader, out ninety thousand, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the four items that are out.
Totally out.
Totally out.
Totally out, yep.
Then for Cs.
For Cs, I only have, let's see.
Village improvement, the CMAC.
Yeah, the library.
I got the CMAC, I've got the detention pond, and the tennis courts.
The library project.
Brassmere Town Hall Library Project.
Playground expansion.
Pleasant Street Bridge Playground Revitalization. That's it.
And then for reductions, you had the loader drop into seventy-five thousand. Two hundred, what is that, two hundred, I crossed it there, yeah, so we had a reduction made. We had a one other, didn't we, one other? Oh, the road, the road plan.
Yeah, the road.
Yeah, we, how much do you wanna go there, one point five?
Well, that, I mean, that would be the max for me, yeah, that was the max.
What was the number, Scott, I'm sorry?
One point five would be the max, but we, we, the min was one.
We'll put in one point, I'd like to see one point five, so it looks like, we can always revisit these and hack away at them more, when that's, it's gonna be a reeditor, reeditor process, um.
Well, I don't know if you wanna flip a coin on the Wurler Hill drains, or that one fell since, flat in between the B and the C.
Yeah, I've got that as a B, C.
How much drainage pipe needs to be changed there, Carl?
The whole hill, I mean, from, from Lamson to Tyler.
Okay.
There's a, you know, there's a, a main trunk line up one side, and then all the crossovers.
Could you ask Carl, could you ask Carl to get back to us on what it would take, at least, to, um, resolve the issue of the person at the bottom of the hill?
That's where I was going next, I mean, if he could.
Is there another option besides doing the whole road to resolve their issue?
Yeah, I'd have to look at how far up we have to go.
Yeah, let's look at that.
Yeah.
That was gonna be my next, you know, question.
And then, you know, for next week, we could get revisions on, you know, the healthcare.
Yes.
Cause that will be a big help for us, um, we'll see a revision on the holiday, right? That would be.
Yeah, now, yeah, how do you, it depends on what the decision is made in terms of how to budget for that. I mean, e- especially when it comes to medical and dental.
Right.
You know, it's a straight hundred percent for property insurance.
Right, so that we can just budget lower because we know that it'll be lower.
Right.
But the other one won't be because we, if we're gonna be giving back to the employees who, because some of that surplus is technically what they had put in as well.
Or enrollees, yeah.
Enrollees, right.
Yeah.
But our cost, our cost will be less. So that, if that's budget, so there's only two ways of doing that. One is that we budget a. Medical line contingency to smooth out future spikes, but that's another than reserve fund or something, wouldn't it? It's crazy, I don't.
Yeah.
There's only so many of these funds.
You've never received a holiday premium before, so.
This is a first.
Yeah, and we wanna do it right, so we wanna consult with some people before we make any decisions on this one.
But more than likely, it'll probably be a reduction in that line for one year, which then it's gonna go back the next year.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say ninety percent of those numbers for medical and dental will be used to offset the budget.
Right.
The bottom line is, there's gonna be some good news, perhaps some very good news, if we can go that far, on the operating budget side of things.
For the insurances?
At least some good news.
A little bit, yeah, the retirement is the scary thing, you know, that's a really, that's a tough, tough number.
That's it, yeah.
So.
There's still a lot of good news on the operating budget side of things.
There is.
Yeah. So, department heads, anything that, I mean, I hope you understand that, we, we all know that your job was to give us all of this. Cause those are legitimate, you know, needs of your departments, but with what we're, what we're faced. And we're still trying to get out of this economic slowdown thing, um, we have to prioritize and make this thing work. So if there's anything creative that, I mean, I think we, the, the ability to buy a surplus vehicle is something that I think people can embrace. I really do. I mean, and I, I mean, and I'm not trying to, is the ability to buy a command vehicle? I mean, I, when I say that, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to make light of this, but when you see, like, it's ninety-something thousand.
The one you got, right?
What?
That's how we have, the one we.
That was a surplus, wasn't it?
No, the one we have currently was purchased under a grant as a paddy wagon.
Right, converted?
Converted over at.
And then it was converted at Northeast Custom Creations into a command post.
And he, and this, I'm, again, if I'm naive or silly in saying that, I just wanna, wanna ask the question, but when I see like ninety-eight thousand dollars. Could you not buy like an RV or something, a small RV for used, that's half the price and then retrofit it?
Problem out of that, is once you start to retrofit it, then you're, you're looking at space, you're looking at installation of computer setups. Radio setups, all those other things that go into it, where the, the price that we have includes the radios installed. Includes the emergency equipment, the emergency lights, all of that other stuff, the storage compartments that we need. This command post is not just a command post, it's also a crime scene processing unit. We have five gallons of water we carry around in there for footprints that we have to do, um, castings. We have, um, three or four boxes of late fingerprint dusting. We have emergency lights that we carry in there. All of that stuff with this new design would have storage areas dedicated to that equipment.
And I'm, like I said, I just, I just, I throw it out because.
On the outside, you also have the lights that extend up, the, uh, pole lights.
Right, but there are, are some of these, like, RVs that I've seen, I mean, they're unbelievable, you know, with pullouts and storage out the yin yang and exterior lights. And, and canopies and all this other stuff, which.
The thing is, Scott, I understand what you're saying, but those compartments that you're talking about are designed for different types of. Things to be stored versus the type of stuff, the, the stuff the chief.
We're looking for equipment versus personal consumable goods, I can.
No, and I, but I've seen the command post, and that, and that's why I generated the question, because I've seen the command post, and I'm like, it looks like it's not a whole lot.
No, it.
And you're, you're absolutely correct, it is not a whole lot. It should be.
You're missing, you're missing three quarters of that truck, which is what he needs to have, and he doesn't have it right now, so it, I mean, he, he can't do his job effectively.
In that truck that you've seen.
I'm saying, it looks, it looks like it's a converted paddy wagon, and that, so from my perspective, I'm like, my gosh, a, a, an RV would be, would be five times better than what you have now.
RVs are some of the cheapest made vehicles on the road. I mean, their, their engines are undersized, the frames are undersized, they're put together with staples and glue. I mean, they're just, it's a whole different.
And I mean, we have command centers that we have, when you say command center, we have a dispatch area that we wanna have. Right now, we have something that we have to pull equipment out, set it outside, open up a folding chair and set it there. I mean, and this is equipment that can get ruined if it's raining or storming or something like that, and that, that's the problems we have right now, there's just not enough.
Now, what, what have, didn't we endorse, like, Manchester's grant? Did, did they ever get that? It was supposed, that was supposed to be a regionalized thing. Did they ever get it, or? What? I hit a sore, I hurt a nerve or something? They did, or?
Saw it from that year.
What?
You'll get the ticket tomorrow.
Have you ever requested it?
Does that mean, what, what, what happened?
We've heard nothing from Manchester about that grant.
Oh. We don't know if they got it or not?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, I haven't heard.
Okay.
Let, let's not dwell on that too long. I mean, let's, I'd like to see the numbers. Repackaged. Cause again, my, my philosophy is the, it's gonna be a tipping point for the voters, and when we get to that tipping point, they're gonna say no to everything. We've seen it though, at least the last two elections, if not three.
My other, my other question, and again, I raised it earlier, I'm fine if I'm in the minority on this. Is there any? Does anybody wanna take a look at what other health plans would look like? And or what different contributions might look like for our employees with respect to healthcare? Um, and our benefits, period, because there are some benefits that are paid a hundred percent by the town. Do we wanna take a look at what, um, what the numbers would be if there was a. Two percent or three percent increased contribution on the part of the employee?
I, I think we have to. Private sector's gone that way, state government's gone that way. I think we need to, we need to follow suit. And I, and I think the voters would expect us to look at that, and, you know, look to town government being run. And adjusted along with the rest of the private and public sectors.
You know, I, I, I stated a couple of years ago that I thought we had to do it kinda incrementally. Because I didn't think it, I, I think anytime you're making any changes like this, you should do it very slowly so peoples can, can kind of adjust. I'm not, I'm not a person who's in, in favor of making a, you know, a one year, boom, ten percent, you know, additional contribution. But by the same token, I think we have been reluctant to, to do it, you know, even incrementally, and that we did it. We did one five percent reduction. I personally would rather have seen us to do two percent a year or something, so that it's, it's, it's staggered. I, I'd like to get to more of an eighty-twenty, I think that's where, um, that's where most folks are, and we're right now, we're at ninety-ten. I'd like to see it get, get us there over the, so I personally would like to see us look at what a, what a, an increase to contribution of, of two percent. Um, or three percent would look like. That's just me.
And for next year, that would only be for non-union because you're in the last year of your.
Which we understand, but, you know, I, I, it's difficult for us to get everybody all in the same cycle, and then when we do. Then we only get one time every three years to then make an adjustment, and it's, yeah, and then it's all enough. So, I mean, now, this, so there's two, is there anyone else who wants to look at the numbers?
I'd like to, I'd like to look at it.
Okay, so you're okay with getting the numbers?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Are you okay with just getting the numbers?
Getting the numbers, but the thing that I think we are better off is to try to do all of them at one time. Rather than for, of reasons that I don't know.
And that's, right, and that's fine, I was.
And I, I don't think it, it, I don't know if that is all total.
No, I, I respect your, your opinion, um, so it's, it's that. Is there anything with respect to, like, right now, we pay a cafeteria rate. Which is, which takes into consideration the average of two plans. One, and then one of them is an HMO, and one of them is a PO, point of service. And I don't know if everybody has, remember to keep a copy of what we. And, you know, do we, do we wanna take a look at, you know, whether it be changes to. Prescription drug plan, changes to, you know, what it would be if we went to a, you know, a different driver of cost?
I thought that we were told that we were not the most expensive health plan.
That is correct.
They told us we were average.
Yeah. But, and I, and I respect that, I just, but I also think that.
But I think that's an important point to keep in mind, because, I mean, I think if we were at an expensive plan, it would be a top priority. I think that we're an average plan, I think that if we do incrementally. With everything in conjunction, I think it works best.
My, you know, my take on it is, I think we have to look, you know, we need to look at all of this. Because this, this is, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars over, you know, five and ten year periods of time. And if we just keep on punting the, punting this ball, and we keep saying, oh, well, we're with, we're with everybody else, well, somebody, you know, we're also. With only eight or nine percent commercial tax base where other communities have higher, and, um, I think we are unique in that respect. So, like, this one here was the high, high deductible health plan, which is what, I hate to say it, a lot of people who don't work for the government have this plan. There are opportunities, I think, to provide our employees with, uh, health savings accounts or other mechanisms. Where you cover part of that, um, high deductible. Uh, many employers do that. They'll, they'll, if, if you had a, uh, two thousand dollar deductible, they would, they would cover a thousand dollars of it. Right off the bat. The cost of this plan is considerably less than, than some of these others, and it, it does make you for. It, it makes you a better consumer, in my opinion, of, of, of your medical dollars, and when you go to the doctor and what you're, what you're spending. So I, I mean, I, to me, I think we need to look at it all.
Well, we're hoping that.
I think exactly what you said is why we, is the pilot program that we were selected, that if we go on. Does exactly what you, what, what you are suggesting.
Making our consumers better shoppers.
That's right, that's right, cause what I.
That's, that's a voluntary plan, and I, I don't know, I, I know I'm in the minority in this one, and I'm fine with it, so, I mean, it is what it is. I think we have all the information that we need for now, and we'll get, Sue will get us what we want, and we'll take it from there for next week. So, is there any other business that we have? I don't think we do.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second of my colleagues, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.